Yeah, I mean it's not a great one, but so I should get there. I should get there.
Would you like to pause your order? The school board meeting of Monday, April 8th, 2019, which will come to school's school board. Madam Chair.
The board members are President Chris Espin, Mr. Bosom, Mr. Gibson, here, Young, Tassie, and Bert here, his own here, that's Timmy, okay. Here. We have Paul, Shannon, and we have our interpreter here, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, gracias. Next, start.
Madam Chair, would that have me back when you get it on here, or have any changes on the calendar or anything that you still need to ask the agenda?
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
It's removed by Ms. Horn and signed by Ms. Tor to approve the agenda as presented. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Certainly, we have none. The agenda has been adopted as approved.
The next page is 1.02, approve the minutes of the 9th, 4th, and March 18th, 2019's school board meetings. Those minutes were sent out and they repeat questions and we sent them. I have not received any edits or changes and they've also been refused to be voted as being accepted.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So.
Exactly. It's been moved by Ms. Burke and signed by Ms. Owen to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Certainly, we have none. The minutes have been approved as presented.
The next item is I am sure from the information I have watched people sign up and they must put their name in there.
Then allow the speaker who has signed up to become the board first and if we have any other members in the audience that would like to speak at this time, please do so for the number. For all speakers, we have three minutes. If you are representing an organization, you have five minutes. You can come forward, sign in, and state your name for the record. Patrick Elliott. And here's Patrick Elliott. Patrick Elliott. If we have any other members in the audience that would like to come forward at this time, please do so. Again, if you are representing an organization, we have five minutes. So we have only one person, but representing an organization, if we have one speaker to speak on the other organization.
I'm going to talk about the dream academy, Dr. Henry, so I'm going to. I mean, I'm going to. I'm going to speak on the night and the dream academy. I'm going to speak for myself. During the year, open the door, tell me the language, I got kind of news and I told you, I think, I came back at the age I thirty-four years old, under the city of the house in the town. I tried, I didn't even, I tried and Saturday night, it didn't work, it didn't work. I tried to, had it, it happened, it changed my life. And it happened, my grandchildren, they still don't know, after all these years, it's something that you always want to do, and so I don't know, I didn't see the. You know, you know, the start, it took closure. It's something I always wanted to do, that started my children, I just got to say, let's try, let's try, I mean, the work that you're doing, I didn't do that, the work that everybody and being an older person, it just, I said, but I said, what's the sound of you, because I don't know, my daughter, you start to, start to, you can't, I'm sorry, it's like you, I mean, I mean, I mean, you guys, you guys, you guys, and I think I said, you guys that, you guys, because I'm, 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 you guys, you guys, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sydney Pender. I am a girl, and I graduated out of Dream Academy. And like my sister was saying, eight weeks in academy, I could be, she said, seven times, seven times, could not pass it. With the Dream Academy, they gave me math, social studies, science, and they helped me to get the, especially the math part, I could not pass it. So please take into consideration, I'm a college graduate, I graduated in 2017 from Cent- Central College as a dental assistant. Without her, I don't know where I would be. So please keep this consideration to keep the school open. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Cobb, I'm fifty-one years old, and I dropped out of school at an early age to raise my child. And when I thought about going back to school, um, I didn't go. And so as I watched my children graduate, because I have two children, and I watched them graduate at Thomas Jefferson High School, they challenged me to go back to school. So last year, I went back to school, but I also tried the Adult Learning Center at Ole Street, and I failed several times, and it's because I didn't have hands-on. Sometimes, you know, people need hands-on to guide them and to help them, and they didn't have tutoring, I was willing to pay for tutoring and everything, they didn't have that. So, you know, and I worked on a job for six years, I started off volunteering as a secretary, and so being that I kept going to school and kept trying, I couldn't move on in a job, so they had to let me go after six years because I didn't have high school to come. So what I did was, I researched and asked around, and there was this woman that had went to Dream Academy, and she told me I probably would want to try to get with the workforce there at Social Services. And so that's what I did, I went to workforce, the workforce center, and I went down there and did everything they asked me to do, but I, you know, I also had another job, because I'm a personal care attendant, you know, so I take care of my aunt, she eighty-seven years old. So I found out that Dr. Henry, Dream Academy, I could do it at home. So I did it at home on the computer, I also went to Dream Academy to get the extra help that I needed. So now I have my own nonprofit organization, right, that's working with women, that's coming out of jails and institutions that need help. And so what I would, and another reason why I did Dream Academy, I'm nervous, y'all, I don't like being in front, but, and so, you know, women that's coming out of jail and penitentiary, you know, and people that need to go back to school to get an education, and because I could get through Dream Academy, you know, I would refer them to Dream Academy. So I would hope that, excuse me, I would hope that you all keep this rule available and over to people who need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Manu Mason. What I know completely is that long streams waiting, be possible to add. Sixty-three years of age, attitude to see my high school. I've lived in challenges in my life, and nothing like being in high school. I restarted my first class, J S R, in September this year. This program, this Dream Academy, is a blessing for people like me, that have lost sight of their dream. How would anyone not have that, that this is a blessing for people who want it? And I always believe that much is given, much is required, and I always believe that when I'm doing something right, something always right comes back to me. But if my heart's not right, if my heart's not right by the authority of God has blessed me with, I will pay the price. Maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but one day, it all comes back on me. And so I hope that we all sincerely, that we consider this thing very openly, that the school needs to stay in the rich community, seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Don Page, Mr. Cameron, and Board Members. This is my third time here again, and I'm just reading excerpts from a letter that I sent to the board. I must say, I was not expecting a small matter of the life of Dream Academy to stir up such a class. I don't know which to greatest stir or they matter on which the voice seems to be divided. I see no reason to turn a mole here into a downtown.
Dr. Henry.
Dream Academy. Yes, Joanne Henry.
Sorry.
My name is Joanne Henry. Dream Academy serves people who are not on the roads of visual public schools or any other public school system, due to their decision to leave school prior to graduation or by virtue of their age. Dream Academy does not receive VDOE or RPS funds to operate its school. As you are well, VDOE indicated on February the nineteenth that the agency does not agree that RPS should partner with Dream Academy to provide an adult education offering for those lacking the funds. That recommendation was made because of Dream Academy does not enroll any students and would not affect the average daily membership of any fund stream that RPS receives by the state or city government, including the appropriation for adult education. Dream Academy also has never requested any funds from RPS. We always pay them for the year-end transfers. The letter of February the nineteenth spells out the regulations that an adult school program must meet, including affiliations with a public school district. In a meeting on March twenty-second at VDOE, I and Dream Academy Academy representatives showed that virtue of all the criteria for an adult high school as stated in the letter would be met if there were a partnership of some kind with RPS. VDO Deputy Superintendent Donald Fairhardt was shown evidence that Dream Academy aside from using a state-approved curriculum, had state-licensed guidance counselors and state-licensed teachers who are licensed in the subject areas offered. Also, he and anyone else with related options with age annuity knows that the requirements for a lab area and size level are met through their own map of that. He also was told that the students who enrolled at Dream Academy was originally entered the ninth grade or on after the two thousand, two thousand and one school year, are told that if their transcript does not show they secure six very high credits before dropping out of school, they must get this G D. The only missing piece is the voice direction to Mr. Cameron to appoint either an assistant super- assistant principal, principal, or other staff member to supervise Dream Academy, that's what we suggest with VDOE. Deputy Superintendent Fairhardt stated at the conclusion of the meeting that VDOE would revisit the issue if a supervisor were, if a supervisor was appointed. I am sure that he has told those inquiries the same, that if the conditions that are reinforced is a February nineteenth letter I met, then there would be no bar to an agreement. Nothing in a state law, nothing in the state law or regulation in the Virginia Administration code twenty-thirdy requires Dream Academy to be an arm of RPS, and nothing bars the school board from creating a memorandum of agreement and understanding that would allow RPS to appoint a supervisor and to authorize school systems sealed to be a fee to the deployment awarded by Dream Academy, so long as relevant RPS officials had the ability to verify the correctness of the Dream Academy transcript which they were to. My only interest, my only interest, as it has been from the beginning, is to provide adults who did not graduate a second chance to do so if they are willing to do the required work. Due to training at Academy, I have succeeded in college and careers and in law enforcement and in the military. I am feeling, thank you, I am feeling the need that is and has been on my reward, and there will always be people who need help and support. And best wishes to you all. The school that I've launched with help and support of a committed board of directors will continue as a positive contributor to the betterment of this community, and those who sided in the need of its service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here representing the Armstrong Science Department and Administration. And my name is Elizabeth Waite, I'm actress. Dear Superintendent Camus, Dr. Tracy F., and Mr. Harry Q., We, the members of the Armstrong Science Department and Administration, are extremely concerned about the proposed course offerings for science for the 2019 and 2020 school years. A total of four incredibly important courses are being removed: environmental science, non-AP, genetics, ecology, and astronomy. We understand that this is part of a push to increase rigor and get more students taking AP courses. These are both worthy goals that we should be striving for, but we believe this is the wrong way to go about it for the following reasons. Number one, this puts all the focus on building rigor on high schools instead of starting with the students' early exposure to science in elementary and middle school, and as Dr. Bell wanted me to add, preschool. Science starts, science is increasingly being shorted in early grades in favor of math and reading, but scientific thinking needs to be established early, and those skills cannot be made up for in four years of high school. Two, it's not just the lack of science skills that make it difficult for our students to do well in higher-level science. Difficulty with reading, writing, and math are often our biggest barriers, especially since AP science is focused heavily on essays, and chemistry and physics require a lot of math. This is not to say that we should avoid these subjects altogether, but that a long-term holistic approach that starts at the elementary or preschool level is needed to ensure that our students are prepared for them. Three, rigor is subjective and should not be the primary focus of any instruction. A course can be very rigorous but ultimately meaningless to our students. Many students learn more from elective science classes in high school than they ever do for AP classes, because those are the classes where teachers can make the content relevant. Anecdotally, I slept through most of AP Biology in high school, but I passed the test because I learned most of it in bio- in my Biotechnology elective. Plus, a course does not need to be AP-level to be rigorous anyways. It's not the name of the course that matters, it's the strength of the instruction. Four, increasing AP courses can risk repeating the same problem as SLO courses, an excessive focus on the test to the detriment of student engagement. Five, our goal as science teachers should be to connect science to our students' lives and then using their engagement with the subject to build scientific literacy and problem-solving skills. Rigor for rigor's sake results in pointless busy work. Six, the courses being removed are some of the most relevant and engaging courses to our students today. How can we not offer ecology and environmental given the global threat of climate change? How can we not overoffer genetics when genetic testing, gene therapy, and personalized medicine are becoming household terms? How can we not offer astronomy when companies are competing to be the first ones to Mars? Seven, non-AP or honors in science electives are not dumbed down. They allow teachers more opportunities to be flexible and creative to build up students' skills, often to prepare them for the higher-level courses. The non-AP environmental science specifically was designed by VDOE to bridge gaps between what students learn in middle school and what they need to know to be successful in upper-level high school courses. We have tried putting all ninth graders in biology in the past, and it wasn't successful because many just had too many skills gaps to make up in one year. Schools have to have the flexibility to offer what the students need. Eight, by gatekeeping environmental science as an AP course, the district would be denying basic environmental awareness education to a large number of students, specifically students with disabilities. Most of our students with disabilities, and at Armstrong it's thirty-three percent, never have the opportunity to take AP or even honors courses because they require co-taught or inclusion classes, which are not offered at higher levels, in large part because of the shortage of bed teachers, not because of the lack of ability of the students. And nine, on a practical level, we also have a shortage of teachers trained and certified to teach AP classes. We need to build our numbers before pushing for higher enrollment. In summary, cutting course offerings is denying students opportunities to learn and is a misguided attempt to increase rigor instead of relevance and engagement in science education. While we absolutely already have many wonderful students that are ready for the challenge of higher-level courses, the fact remains that many students are not, often because of gaps in their elementary and middle school education. Just like a science child doesn't learn to read simply by giving them lots of books, we are unlikely to see an increase in science performance simply by putting students in more rigorous courses. This letter was signed by all four administrators at Armstrong as well as eight members of the Science Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Luis Luna, and I'm a social studies teacher at Union High School. So apparently, it seems like as of right now, it doesn't really seem like the mayor's proposed budget will be entirely funded the way they want it to. So from my understanding, the city council has asked for very specific priorities, and as of right now, it seems like we have a strategic plan and kind of like how to pass it. Obviously, there's going to have to be some cuts or some type of compromises, so we need to make sure that we really are giving them the specific things that are most important to our students, our teachers, and the all-around staff. This is kind of anecdotal evidence, but from many people that I have spoken with, many teachers, very little to nobody wants to know. It's a hundred thousand dollars, and every, a hundred thousand dollars are going to get that asset really quickly. Maintenance issues, we need air duty counters for our kids, we need nurses, there's so much more that can be done than just some, I don't know, it's ridiculous sounding, you are going to need just a hundred thousand dollars a year on something that's not going to really help the kids, that's not going to help the staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the board, Mr. Camus. So I am here, I'm Velma Seymour, and I'm speaking on behalf of the League of, Richmond Region League of United Latin American Citizens. And it's, it's a little bit different, but you're going to hear from me today, but I feel it's very necessary on behalf of LuLa to express my disappointment in the appearance of RPS trending to back in the day when it was all black and white. It seems the maybe two or three inches that we have made in progress of inclusion of the field communities has been kind of stuck aside, and I base that on a couple of things. One is recently, and great, the Brothers United Mentorship Initiative, that's very nice. However, there has been a mentorship program for African-American young men, which actually is very inclusive, and that is, was mounted and started a few years ago by a special ed teacher at GH Reed Elementary School, Dr. Ron Johnson. He has Focus Academy, and his, the website is myfocusacademy.org, and you'll see the same principles that this initiative sets to, to advance, has already been in place. And GH Reed has the, the population for it truly to be inclusive, not George Mason. And secondly, the, I'm very, very disappointed in the outcomes that I'm seeing with edutainment. So it's, it's set on surmountable barriers to limited English proficient students. It was my understanding that it was meant to supplement ELL instruction, not replace it. So I currently tutor a Latina junior attending Hidden High School, and she's also enrolled in, into the English nine. So she has attempted seven, she has made seven attempts at passing this course, and the highest she's been able to score is thirty percent. So one of the things that I've learned from, I know how hard she works and how much time we put into it, in asking her and digging, she came here three years ago, and she was, had only, she hadn't quite completed the fifth grade in Guatemala. However, when she came here and she was registered, because of her age, she was placed in ninth grade. So I don't know how in the world she has made it to ninth to eleventh grade, but she's not the exception. This is very usual, very common, that it's been overlooked. So I'm very, very disappointed with that. And lastly, I want to express that LuLa- And lastly, I want to express that LULAC will not be supporting the mayor's budget. And simply because we feel very strongly that the mayor has not been, there's a good steward, steward of the monies. And I know that many of you are for it. However, I would ask to look at all the empty spaces or the real estate, the vacant real estate that's going to waste, that we're not only, the city's not only paying for, but paying taxes on it. So how is it really fair to ask citizens to pay taxes when the city already is wasting money on taxes with the Redskins camp, with what's going on at the Coliseum? It's, it just doesn't make sense to me. And for those reasons, LULAC will not be supporting it. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deanna Fiero and I'm here as a Richmond educator, as a Richmond resident, and as an current Huguenot High School student. I just wanted to talk tonight, and I'm also a member of the VP of Education Board for LULAC. I want to talk about the dual enrollment program and the process and how it was. I know it seemed like the first year that there were vaccinations with it. I just was very surprised that again, the same issues did occur. But what really, really got to me in the heart was when I started to see other parents online. We were on the Facebook page that a lot of parents have, talking about concerns and trying to get ahold of somebody and go over the night. And then there was a teacher who I have partnered with in other education associations, and that was Tori Pearson, and she's an ESL educator here in Richmond. She's a wonderful lady, who I want to say thank you for what she did and want to make sure that she gets recognized for what she did through the open enrollment process. She had an ESL student that she teaches at Acre Middle School who signed up themselves for the open enrollment process. So the student went to the day away, did the application mostly by themselves and then went to Kirkland. So the student was getting after school. The student did this because at home, there was nobody who could understand the process, who could read the process, who really understands the spoken language and understood the process. So the night that, the evening that the announcement of placement was supposed to come out, this young lady was texting her pictures of the emails that were coming in so that Ms. Pearson could explain them to her. Because even though the student has a good level of proficiency in English, we should understand that level of English, the academic level of the English that we're using in the English. And after myself, it was already frustrating. But I could just imagine what the student was going through and what this teacher was going through with her student and the parents also just not knowing what's going on and what's gonna happen for the students the next year. After that, during the process, I started to see what other programs are available for our ESL students. And in that, I found out, I didn't, this is not even what I worked for, Richmond Public Schools, that we offer a partial immersion program, which is something that we would like to push forward, which is a dual-language program in Richmond Public Schools. So the partial enrollment program would give students first and second grade English instruction for math and science and Spanish. And that's all the way up to about fifth grade. The only thing is that this is only offered at one slot, and there's twenty-five slots. It's supposed to give preference to Spanish-speaking students. If you don't know about it and there's nobody there to help you with the process, I think that is an issue of institutional diversity.
Thank you. This concludes our public information period.
Yes, Chair, as the record reflects, we've been joined by Miss Cassidy and we've also been joined by another student, Ms. Lynn Johnson, and Ms. Karen Stewart.
Good evening, Morgan.
Hello.
Morgan is a senior at Huguenot High School, as well as working towards her advanced studies diploma. She will also be receiving her associate's degree from J. Sargent Middle School at the College of the State of Virginia, as she is a member of the Durham College faculty program. Morgan plays on the Huguenot High School varsity basketball and softball teams as well as in the, Ms. Johnson's academic and extracurricular involvement also holds memberships in PCC, LA, and state. Morgan will be attending Norfolk State University next year on a scholarship. She will be playing softball for NSU and working on her degree in chemistry and on a pre-medical scholarship. Is there anything you'd like to share as we pause recording this?
Yes.
And you can, if there is a problem, you can probably do the microphone.
Welcome, everybody, to the meeting. I'm Louis Johnson, and I just wrote down a couple of issues and things I want to bring up to the members of the board and people in the room. Okay. A couple, a lot of big problems happened this year. Some regarding the credits, some of my classmates just wound out maybe a month and a half ago. Some of them transferred, some of them have been gone there for years. And I just have a few questions going by, were we disinformed recently, maybe? Why wasn't there any signal when we were early on in the year, though we could have avoided this prior to graduation? And...
Do you want to ask all your questions, or let me do all of them and then you get all the answers?
I also feel like Richmond College Schools should have the same amount of opportunities as county schools. You don't have the same resources, you should get more laptops. As a ECA student, I get one, but my peers don't have one, so I have to work at home. And also feel that we should fix up schools and get them updated environments, always a learning environment for students, not only students, but a better teaching environment for teachers. And I also believe that we should start hiring teachers who are good and fit for the job. I feel like they should be not only there just to teach, but to teach life lessons for kids via support systems to help them get to college and life, teach them lessons by the ministry, or the chapter, to help them. And I also feel like we should have representatives coming to the school just to hear kids' voices and opinions on what should be changed. And you can do that by having the top people of each class, maybe the second class, and third class, let them see, like, at each school, whenever you can get around, just see what they have and opinions on school, what they want to be changed, knowing we're not just always listening to you guys. You gotta hear what you have to say. And that's like...
That's it? Well, briefly, I would say thank you so much, those are all fantastic. I love hearing from our students. I think you guys are the smartest about what's working in our schools and what's not. And so I would love to come to Huguenot and spend time with you and your peers. I also have a high school student council that we meet every week, every month. And they provide me with all kinds of important feedback and insights. But I would love to come and spend some time with you and your peers. Couldn't agree more that teaching is not just about reading and math, but about the whole child and supporting kids to be inspired. And so as we think about who we're recruiting for the next set of teachers to join RPS, we want to make sure that they not only know their stuff, but they know how to be that person who can support kids with whatever is going on with their lives. Absolutely. And the heavens agree. On resources, could not agree more. From technology to the state of our buildings and everything else, it's one of the reasons we spend so much time around this table talking about budgets and why we're pushing so hard to get more money for RPS for next year. And then on the transcripts and the credits, we had to do a lot of work to figure out what was left. And that took several months. And so after the first semester, we were able to finally put out and correct the transcripts. I wish we were able to tell you this a lot. In fact, I wish it never was a problem. But I'm happy at least now that we've identified the issue and are able to begin to work for it. Glad to come and talk with you and your friends at Huguenot if you can go and work with all of us. Keep asking the questions, they're great. We're excited to have you here and I don't hesitate to participate your advice.
Also, I'd like to acknowledge Mom, Ms. Johnson, and also I've been knowing Morgan, Ms. Morgan, for a long time, but she is truly the epitome of a student athlete. So welcome, and I'm so excited. Thank you for being here. Hey, Mom, Ms. Johnson, just standing right back. Thank you, thank you for everything that you've done and will continue to do. Item?
The next item is a review of business brief on 001, you see information regarding the Dream Academy.
So board members, before we give you an update overview of the last, the previous video meeting, we received an email from Dr. Henry and we want to be respectful of her wishes, but she indicated to request any discussion about announcing Dream Academy what she said in her, in her email, to request any discussion about more action steps involving the Dream Academy to be stricken from the agenda for the 4th April 8th agenda. But to be respectful of our colleagues, we are still making some questions regarding the Dream Academy to the Department of Education. So just to give you some highlights about the meeting that Ms. Dora and I attended, and this document has been uploaded to Board Doc. So in attendance was Dr. Lane, Rusty Fairheart, Val Brabel, Zach Robinson. Let me back up to identify the titles. So Dr. Lane is the superintendent of the Dream Department of Education, Rusty Fairheart, chief of staff to superintendent, Val Brabel, director of school quality, Zach Robinson, director of policy, Susan Williams, assistant attorney general of the state of Virginia, and Ms. Dora, vice chair, and myself, Dawn Page. Just some brief highlights of the meeting, and as I stated before, this update uploaded on Board Doc. So, in the meeting, the review of the timeline, the Dream Academy, what was stated by Dr. Lane and members that were in attendance at the meeting, that the Dream Academy is an outside private entity. A public entity, RPS, cannot authorize to issue state-sanctioned diplomas to an outside private entity, which is Dream Academy. The Dream Academy is a private entity, therefore diploma cannot be certified by a public entity, which is Richmond Public Schools or any other locality, any other public locality. The Virginia Council on Private Education can offer guidance for how to, for how a private school can choose a private accrediting body to issue diplomas, but this cannot be done by a public entity, which is RPS. And Dr. Lane, so to make it clear, Ms. Dora and I, we, we share with them that the board, the board's motion for someone from the Department of Education to be in attendance at our meeting, but Dr. Lane explained that all questions will be properly vetted by the director of policy, the director of school quality, and the attorney general's office. And he said that he will give all answers to questions transparently, but would like to respond in writing so that they can be sure to properly that, while consulting with all the different departments to get the exact information requested. So if board members still have questions regarding the Dream Academy and the relationship between the Department of Education, we are asking that you submit your questions to the clerk by Friday, which is... So that is an overview of the meeting. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate that. Can't believe it's come out of loss, so it's a lie. My very good friends, some of the new reference, I've known for a long time. I'm not here, excuse me, I'm not here, so you may try to address our inquiries, but I understand it's through no lack of government board leadership. And I just wanted to convey this individual board members' gratitude and appreciation to our chair and vice-chair for what I understand was repeated requests of the UAW to appear and receive. Thank you.
So again, if you have, if board members have further questions for the Dream Department of Education, if you can submit your questions to the clerk by close of business on Friday. So questions can be submitted to Dr. Lane collectively as a board. Ms. Robinson?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I have to echo the sentiments of, you know, probably Mr. Young, you know, I'm extremely down for his July meeting. The state board of the representatives are not here today to answer the questions and especially as we start to talk about the meeting and so forth. And I am also extremely concerned, I guess I will put this right into view on my question, I just can't, I have to admit, they advise RPS not to move forward and with this partnership, you know, how it was presented, was verbal, was it written? And why allow it to go on so long? So that's not a question. You know, as we talk about budgets and we talk about possibly supporting increases and the real estate tax that will affect people who are in poverty and we hear this Disney program that we partner with Dream Academy to help those possibly get out of poverty, to help them empower themselves at no cost to the district. So, you know, we're just a big additional to meeting. You know, losing more conversation. So, and for the misinformation and I will be submitting some additional questions in writing.
So again, just to remind board members, please submit all questions that you may have by close of business on Friday so that we can collectively submit questions to Dr. Lane so that these questions can be properly vetted again by the director of policy, director of school quality, and the attorney general's office for the state of Virginia. Next item?
The next item is three point zero two, receive a strategic plan update.
My understanding is this was an opportunity for board members to share ideas that they had. Mr. Marla indicated he wanted to discuss the teacher retention part.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Marla. Ms. Young.
Just real briefly, and this is, if we're not prepared to discuss this this evening, it's fine. But the one thing that I'm most, I think that I'm most excited about is the strategic plan is the teacher who visits and can therefore prepare to provide more or provide an update on that. Not, well, like Mr. Marla just said, for that to. My preference would be to give Dr. Harris an opportunity to lead our presentation. But you know, it's in the works and we're hoping to do some initial training this spring, Saturday. And so perhaps have an expert who should provide that information.
Ms. Burke.
I would also like to see along the lines of how our students academically are performing at this time. Because we should have read your data in place regarding the assessments that were given after winter break. So at this point, we move to the next meeting soon. We know pretty much how our students are performing under the academic strategic plan. I'd like to know the, uh, the, the acceptance given, also the attendance, and also the suspension rate.
I would respectfully ask if we could hold on to the following meeting because our next meeting is next Monday. And so it would take a bit of time just to pull all the information together. And I want to make sure that we can do the best possible we can.
Also superintendent cameras, I concur with my colleague, Ms. Burke. And because I, I think it's critical that we have some indicators how our children are performing or the expectations for the standards of learning. Even though that should not be the only, only measurement of academic performance for our students, but also like this is the information. And also, other than the lack of resources that we are in need of for our students to be successful as we prepare for the remainder of the school year and going forward. I think that's also important, important as well. Ms. Young, Ms. Gibson.
And if there's a consensus around the room, and I had a conversation last week with a couple of our human instructors about that survey, the, I'm curious, morning, I'm not too sure if you want to throw this thought, but that, that V O E survey, the anonymous survey of our students. Really, you're seeing that data on a split scale. I'm not sure if it's readily available, but when it is available.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate my request to put together the dashboard specific to the strategic plan and the benchmark data. So some of the goals that were indicated on the strategic plan include, you know, the graduation rate, student enrollment, absenteeism, some of the things that we discussed. I think if you could have a document that includes the benchmark from last year's data to, to have the reference so that you can, you know, have that starting point both from a tracking standpoint, I think that would certainly help to, 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 to kind of wrap around all those things that we're talking about tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, because that's another critical point as we measure accountability. And I think that's, that's key. And we're looking forward for a status update from the administration regarding that. Ms. Cosby and Ms. Burke.
So I just want to make sure that we're thinking the same thing. So this is the Dallas Core Card that we've been talking about for a bit. So yes, I too want to see that, but also, um, we're asking for some data now where it really should be regular updates. It should be on the calendar. We know when do we set certain data and I thought you told me mainly the calendar, whether it is every month when we talk about specifically these academic indicators. And third, I know that for some of this information, the administration has articulated that baseline information has to be cleaned, okay? But for those things that we have trend data, we'd like to see that. And more importantly, for us to create the goals. So yes, we have increase in, in, you know, S O L, blah, 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 blah. But, okay, for a year, is it going to be a 20% increase that you want to see? Is it going to be a 30% increase that you want to see? So I, I hope that we can drill down with more specific, um, measurements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur, but this is not positive. Because if we get this, we gotta be ready. So henceforth, I don't know whether we need a motion or what, but we need to have something in place during the next year, this coming school year, either quarterly or monthly. But we're about the teaching, learning, student learning process. That's our number one goal, student achievement. And I think it will also give us an opportunity to fine tune and not to get sidetracked. So we need to have something in place, just as Todd just stated as well, that either quarterly or after assessments are given after each nine weeks period. That that should, should be ongoing and we should be able to pull up on Google Docs or whatever. Not Google Docs, even board docs. But I, I do hope that when we get our report made, that we also get some feedback and advice to, uh, when we get the assessments, because this may be what we get. So. I appreciate, I'm sure others will appreciate that as we teach student achievement number one.
Absolutely, and we welcome that discussion. As always, been the intention to put that together by the end of this calendar year as a foundation for, not calendar, academic year, as a foundation for next year. Making sure that we had benchmarks for all ten hurdles, along with key performance indicators that would help us identify who are not on the way to those goals. Along with a plan for something like a quarterly, quarterly discussion before about all of that information. So this is where it comes into play and we will figure out when to schedule it. On the next several weeks, we'll bring it forward and have discussion. Maybe the intention is to have support and we'll determine miracle targets, not just increase, but by how much, uh, for targets that seem appropriate for where we are and where we're trying to get. So all of that is in the works. Gladly discuss and share this. I will also just say, on the academic front, we have a hodgepodge of assessments, apparently good. I would argue two million. And so, uh, in the current setup, it is difficult to get really good and thoughtful data about progress that aligns to expected outcomes on this. So one of the things that we're doing from an academic perspective this year is to try to think through what are all the assessments, what is necessary? What not, both to provide kids and teachers that have time spent testing because they spend too much time doing it. And also what would be something that we can rely on? What would be as an indicator of likely outcome on S O L so we can track? So that's part of the work that we're doing too. I could flood with data from I R A D and M A P and everything else. It wouldn't actually be very helpful. Because it would say a hundred different things. It would be confusing. And I don't think, and if we ask the teachers here, that it would be a useful tool either for what the administration can do or for knowing how things are actually going. So we really want to streamline that so that we can get the right data that is clear, useful, and appropriate for the mission.
Ms. Dorr.
Just to, uh, along with what has already been said, um, Felicia, Dawn and I have also gone to pull out the old calendar. So we're definitely working on that. And if any board member wants to be worked up off the, if that kind of piece back to us or whatever, just let us know. I think there's definitely the review of the dashboard on a quarterly or monthly basis. And then there's some other things we talked about, like understanding when, what population patterns there are for the next couple of full years and stuff like that. So if there's anything that you feel like we can get better about, or we're more proactive about our next year, I'd like to.
Ms. Gibson.
Uh, thank you. And I just want to make also one other point as it pertains to assessments. You know, for, for the, just wanted to clarify for my perspective. I am less interested in assessments for the sake of determining how we're going to do on that S O L. It just seems like we're only trying to wait and just keep getting up on the scale. What, what I'm, I'm most interested personally is, you know, how we can use assessments more as a diagnostic tool and to determine that, that we are providing the right needs in, in schools. So for instance, you know, we had a speaker who spoke about the, you know, science classes. You know, I, I want to have a clear understanding of, you know, in terms of needing students that need remediation. You know, are we able to, with the curriculum and the coursework and the teachers that we have set up, that we are able to use that information to plan for next year to be able to, to address the needs of our students right now? And so I, I want to make sure that, that, you know, that we appreciate that tests are old for, you know, yes, well, not the only ending here. And a question, we're going to do a year test for, for that solvers here.
And I would like to clarify that, um, number one, the most important assessment that happens in classrooms happens each and every day with teachers who are using various techniques to determine whether students are understanding material that is being taught. That happens through exit tickets, it happens through all sorts of other leaders that expert teachers employ so that on a daily basis they can determine what is working, what is not, and what adjustments that they need to make. Second kind of assessment that happens is a periodic interim assessment to know, I don't want to give a typical, on say, a quarterly basis, how things are going to ensure that if there are large gaps for large groups of children, there's an opportunity to do a reteaching exercise to address where those issues are. Those two forms of assessment are the most important. The third and last is summative assessment, which is in the form of the S O L here particularly. What I am suggesting, um, it would be useful and appropriate to pour that on is quarterly interim assessment approach, which tells us how are our kids generally doing against the same. It's not a summative assessment, repeated four times over the year. It's not as if we're giving the end of the year test four times and lo and behold, surprise that they don't know the information that's on the top of their mind. Rather, what we would be providing is information that's aligned to the standard that illustrates of what has been taught thus far. Do you feel kids are on track or not by what percentage in various subgroups and so forth? That is what we are trying to do.
Dr. Seppi.
Um, is, yes, no question, and question. I know that previously we, we give them feedback for the assessments. My question is, will your team be separating it by school? If not, can we get it questioned?
I'm not sure I understood the question you mean.
You mean the data by school?
Right.
Oh, absolutely. Not just by school, but by subgroups of them. Absolutely.
Ms. Kyle.
The next item is frequency zero three, you see for action or resolution regarding the mayor's proposed budget.
So board members, please, this resolution was presented at the March eighteenth meeting, one meeting for review. There's a motion to approve the resolution regarding the mayor's proposed budget. In a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Gibson, excuse me, Ms. Gibson, to approve the resolution regarding the mayor's proposed budget. Any discussion? Ms. Dorr.
Um, just a question for the people in the bill. I think we can agree that we all have different opinions. So the last sentence, this makes sense to me, but I do have a question about the mayor's increase in year-over-year funding. That seems to me to imply that our kids are adequately funded today and that we only need incremental funding year-over-year. So I just hope you guys can come back on the topic.
Mr. Young.
Uh, yeah, that's an outstanding question. The intent of the resolution was to convey that the RPS does merit year-over-year increase and that it's our expectation, excuse me, I would say, to be for myself, my, my expectation that we would see a year-over-year bonus in regards to last council appropriation, what we requested of this. To that, absolutely.
Ms. Dorr. But I can, everyone wants to go. Mr. Marla.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So with regard to the year-over-year increase, is that, it does seem unspecified. So I think I feel a little more comfortable with it if we did specify what we're looking for as far as an increase goes. Are we at a position where we specify that we are hoping to get the increase from our proposed budget? And basically say, you know, council, mayor, you know, figure out how to get us this money? Or is this a situation where we're just kind of throwing it out there?
Ms. Young.
I, I don't have any reservation, I don't have any reservation about inclusion of that kind of language. I would need to defer to a staff with an exact percentage, but, but I don't have any reservation about inclusion of that, of that language. Mr. Marla is speaking. Uh, and I'm, and I'm sorry, I didn't fully address, so that regard, the number, the number part, so, yeah. So yes, the, the resolution is silent, currently silent as it relates to, it's silent as in regards to the other means or mechanisms to arrive at that dollar figure. That's correct. I, yeah, I, I mean, uh, you know, just going to say this next, when we address the volume resolution, but I'm, I'm able to say it now. My expectation of our friends and colleagues on council would be that they would reciprocate what this law did a month or two months ago in concert with the RPS administration and specifically identified efficiencies and cuts. I'm referring to efficiencies and cuts. specifically identified efficiencies and cuts, I'm referring to efficiencies and cuts in City Hall on the city side. So I don't have any reservation about inclusion of that, that kind of language. That's where I'm at on it. Voted in favor for the first time in three years for an RPS budget a month or whatever, two months ago, with expectation that our friends downstairs would identify efficiencies and cuts and reciprocate what we did. So to the extent that there's some interest in inclusion of that kind of language, I mean.
So based on the comments, to make adjustments or edits to the resolution, we need to remove it from the agenda and bring it back the next meeting? If that's... So the question is, if we are talking about making changes, so does that state that the resolution has been changed, made, and bring it back the next meeting? Ms. Barlow.
I already spoke something related to this. Copy of this?
Yeah. I just have a question about this. When will we start to get, because this is pretty much going to go on this special thing? In the 15th?
Likely at MAF.
Oh, MAF, okay, yes. Okay. Mr. Young.
So Madam Chair, I understand, because we tend to remember the agenda that we're going to ask vote on resolution. Oh, in that case, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what we were next to be voting. In that case, I would, in, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what we're going to be doing next. And I would respectfully decline any amendments to the resolution as introduced as a signature if we had to defer to future amendments.
Right. So it's just, yeah, right, so Mr. Young has restated that his preference is to move forward with this resolution as presented. Ms. Barlow and Ms. Dor.
Thank you. Thanks for your explanation, Mr. Young. I'm a little saddened because I thought we were on the verge of a kumbaya moment. We haven't had this frequently enough as a board. So my hope for a friendly amendment was that we could merely switch out a line, maybe two, basically just to say that we're asking for the amount that we already approved in the budget. So if we, if we could switch that out today, then I don't even know that there's a necessity for this second motion.
So, yes, please write down the exact language.
Yeah, and just to clarify for, clarify to my colleagues, basically, I think that substantive differences between the two resolutions is that one is basically silent on how much we're going to ultimately be asking for. And then the other resolution says that we basically commend the mayor for his efforts to engage in discussion to request the funds and then, but if council doesn't go along with it, then we want them to still come up with a reset to the dollar addition. So in this case, I think the key differentiator really is whether we can switch out a line to say that we still want the extra thirty-seven million dollars and happy to just write that down.
Ms. Cosby. First, Ms. Dor, here is Ms. Cosby.
All right, so you're asking, for the current, well, that's what I want to show, not the one of them that is designated, but this one right here, the one that, and the line would be, first, it's asked of the city council.
Ms. Barlow.
Perhaps we can.
Ms. Dor.
Yeah. Well, if we want to affirm the ask, that would be great, but I think it does get a little confusing with line ask. So if you, if you either, so.
So board members, Ms. Dor.
I would motion that we...
No, we have a motion. So, and we are finished with the debate regarding this resolution. Hard question, hard question.
Madam Chair, I move to amend, section A, to put forth the dollar figure for the requested increase in year-over-year funds, which I believe is thirty-seven million.
So can you write it down, Ms. Barlow? You amend that.
Okay, Ms. Barlow, you are amending to approve the resolution as written, the motion to approve the resolution as written.
Sorry.
Are you amending to approve the resolution as written?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so.
Ms. Gibson. It is my understanding that Mr. Barlow is going to amend, amend my motion to approve the resolution with an amendment that we're putting the language down.
Right, Ms. Young, Ms. Young, you should make your second.
Yes, that I seconded.
Well, while that's happening, I appreciate the kumbaya motion at the moment. I am glad that we're all engaged, that we do want the money that we voted to ask for. I find the resolution to be a bit confusing now, so I'm going to vote no on this specific resolution. But I appreciate the opportunity for everyone to talk about how we do actually want this money from the city. And I don't view our ask as an incremental ask, I view it as a, as a bold move to really fund, fully fund our strategic plan and our vision for the future.
So, board members, once Ms. Barlow completes the language for the amendment, we're voting first on the amendment, and then the motion. We need a second to the amendment. So we have, we have to read it first.
It says, I move that we approve Mr. Young's...
Ms. Barlow. We press whether to change it.
Sure. I want to make sure it makes sense to people.
I move that we approve Mr. Young's resolution with the following amendment, add totally thirty-seven million dollars.
Section A.
Section A. So, section A states, affirms this ask of the city council and mayor for year-over-year increase in spending for Richmond Public Schools for 2019, 2020. Total in thirty-seven million dollars. So it was amended by Ms. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Gibson to amend the original motion for the resolution that was presented to the board on March 18. Any discussion?
Thank you. So as I understand this amended resolution, all that it is now saying is that this board affirms that what they asked for, they still ask, and that this board does not endorse the statement that was made by Board Leadership and myself supporting the mayor's budget. So I'll be very clear, as I read it, unless I read it wrong, all that it is saying is we asked for thirty-seven million and we are still asking for thirty-seven million, without taking a position on the budget that has been presented by the mayor. And I do think it is important that the public understands where every member of this board stands on the mayor's budget proposal. Now, I'm assuming then that that will be addressed by the second resolution, but I want everyone around the table to make sure that, I want to make sure I understand that this first resolution, all that it is saying now is, one, what we asked for, we're still asking for. Two, the statement by Board Leadership and myself does not represent the board.
And also, what concerns me, the resolution, including the amendment, it does not speak to the strategic plan, supporting the funding for the strategic plan as in the mayor's budget. Also, it does not speak to the funding support to address our facility needs, which is just a drop in the bucket, but it's a start. And there are still, still some missing pieces in the amended resolution, and based on the language that's in there, I cannot support it. It is not, it does not address or speak to the needs of Richmond Public Schools. It does not speak to, we're supposed to give out divisions of children, education. Ms. Young.
So, I'm sorry, the, must be having a, on the three point of four, what were we addressing next? When I read it on four dots, I interpreted that to mean that when I say receive consideration resolution, we're going to have an opportunity to superintend it, for all nine persons to vote either yea or may, or the same in regards to essentially a support or a decline. But did I misunderstand in a previous conversation?
So this resolution is speaking to the resolution that was presented at the March 18 meeting. The next resolution is to receive for, to receive, um, right, it's not a vote, it's received for consideration. And at the next meeting, we will vote. So let me restate this again. So this resolution, including the amendment, speaks to the resolution that was presented at the last board meeting, March 18. So this resolution is now on the table for a vote.
Hey, thank you.
And amendment.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm sorry, wait a minute. So in other words, three point of four is essentially like a first read?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm clear, okay. But we will have an opportunity to superintend it, to, to vote on.
Either one. Embold.
I have concerns about this resolution with the amendment. Because true, I do not believe in my own project, because I do not believe in that. It changes the needs of his district, one way. Basically, because of, although, although I know that you understand your job, it is important, I just, so I'm concerned about this. Here, because the budget that we did for, that was, the department does not need my people in this situation.
Ms. Gibson.
I wanted to just know, I share, sort of, concerns regarding the budget. From my perspective, since this, this been ready to us again, that we will talk about our budget, you know, but I would like to get as much money as we can, from my perspective, yes, I would like to move around, publish that income money, I'd like to save some of these jobs and services and programs, and I'm hoping that we have, continue to have the discussion to figure out how we can prioritize our dollars. But certainly, my goal is that we get as much of the funding as we can so that we have some flexibility to make those modifications.
So, we're voting on the amendment. The amendment, amendment states to approve Mr. Young's resolution with the following To add a total in thirty-seven million dollars to section A, affirms this ask of the city council and mayor for a year-on-year increase in spending for Richmond Public Schools for 2019, 20, total in thirty-seven million dollars.
You have a question?
The amendment.
Not the resolution.
Right, just the amendment. So this vote is for the amendment, not the resolution. Hard question.
Again, this vote is just on the amendment, and if it is approved, it will become...
Again, this vote is just on the amendment, and if it is approved, it will become part of the main motion.
Mr. Ballow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
I understand.
Ms. Owen?
I understand.
Ms. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Thor?
I see.
Ms. Peggy? Yes.
Motion passes six. So the motion is now to approve the resolution. Approve the resolution regarding the mayor's proposed budget to include, I'm sorry, to add to section A total of thirty-seven million. So A would read affirms this ask of city council and mayor for a year-over-year increase in spending for Richmond Public Schools for 2019-2020. Total of thirty-seven million.
Hard question? Mr. Ballow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, I think I just wanted to reflect the similar sentiments to Ms. Gibson's. I'm in the business at this point, or my goal at this point is to get as much as we can for RPS so we can effectively make budget decisions moving forward. Um, that said, I think that that means there are multiple avenues to go about doing that, but that's the mayor's budget or whether that's uh, through some hybrid approach from council. So at this point, I don't feel comfortable condemning, uh, the mayor's budget. So I'm unlikely to, uh, vote, I'm going to vote against this one in favor of the, by the resolution.
And also, I want to make it clear. I'm in support of funding for this school division. I'm in support of funding because if we look at the funding over the last years, um, in the past years, since two thousand and eight, we have not received the appropriate funding level at the rate of inflation. So not to belabor this point, I support the funding, but I cannot support the, um, the information, the variables in this resolution. Hard question? Ms. Cosby?
Okay, so we just want to research this one.
So then, we voted on the next. Now we give a vote on the resolution. Hard question? Mr. Ballow?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Sapien? Ms. Thompson? Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Thor?
No.
Mrs. Peggy?
No.
Motion fails, hard to vote. And the next item is to receive for consideration a resolution supporting the mayor's proposed budget. And this resolution has been posted to board docs.
So again, um, board members, as Ms. Warren clerk has just stated, this, um, resolution has been uploaded to board docs. So tonight, we are receiving this resolution for receiving information for this resolution. And I will read it. So whereas the school board of the city of Richmond is responsible for the budget for Richmond Public Schools, and whereas funding for Richmond Public Schools is partly reliant on the city of Richmond, and whereas city council is responsible for the budget for the city of Richmond, and whereas the mayor, mayor is as provided for in the city charter, is responsible for submitting a proposed budget to city council. Whereas the school board of the city of Richmond acknowledges that high-quality school districts, such as Richmond Public Schools, require a significantly greater investment in children than school districts lower rates of quality to demonstrate acceptable level, levels of student achievement. Whereas the city, city's contribution to Richmond Public Schools has been allocated at a rate lower than inflation since fiscal year 2017. And there's a footnote in funding year 2018, 2019, RPS did not receive any year-over-year increase from the city. Whereas current funding levels for Richmond facilities maintenance are insufficient to maintain highly functional school buildings. Whereas the Richmond School Board has adopted a strategic plan, dreams for RPS, which requires significant investments in our children to enact. Whereas the mayor has proposed a budget for fiscal year 2020, this, fiscal year that includes historic investment in the children of Richmond Public Schools. And whereas the school board of the city of Richmond considers its obligation to the students along the families of approximately twenty-five thousand students to be critical, now therefore being resolved by the school board of the city of Richmond that this body affirms its request of the city council and mayor for a year-over-year increase in funds equal to the amount set forth in the mayor, in Mayor Stony's proposed budget for Richmond Public Schools for 2019-2020. Recognizes the many demands for dollars on the city of Richmond in a difficult balancing act required of city council and the mayor. Affirms its understanding and respect of the roles of the school board, city council, and the mayor. Values and asserts the importance of identifying efficiencies to prioritize the highest value for every dollar. Respects that Richmond Public Schools students, families work hard to pay for their bills, including taxes to the city of Richmond. The collective will of the school board hereby enforces Mayor Stony proposed education funding level set forth in his proposed 2019-20 budget, which result in an increase of thirty-seven million of year-over-year funding for Richmond Public Schools. And that in the event city council chooses not to institute a cigarette tax and increase Richmond's real estate tax to one-twenty-nine per thousand of home value. The school board collectively urges city council to demonstrate its commitment to Richmond Public Schools by meeting the school funding level set forth in the mayor's budget. So this is the resolution we are receiving for information tonight.
I would just, um, bring out the reminder changes. Um, there's a different head of the top, uh, begins. Uh, now. What I, uh, was going on. Whereas the mayor is, as provided for in the city charter, is responsible. So one of those is, this needs to go away. And then, um.
Part of this orange is looking for the other edits. Mr. Young?
I was just having a sidebar conversation with my colleagues in this procedural question for attorney. Six, six votes to waive the first reading. Is that, is that correct?
That's right, Mr. Young.
First and second reading relates to your policies. So, um, board leadership can speak to, I guess, the, for continuity sake, the, um, previous resolution that was considered was put on both meetings. And so I think for continuity sake, the second one was to be put on for second, for two meetings. So it is up to the board as to whether or not they want to dispense with the second reading of that resolution we vote tonight. And I don't believe, given that it's not a policy, um, that it requires, um, the suspension rules as your policy would. So you just look.
So I think attorney Lily, um, stated that, well, so as she stated, to be consistent. So the first resolution, we received the first read and tonight voted on the first resolution that was presented to the board on March 18th. So we're just following practice procedure as we did with the first resolution. But if it's the will of the board vote tonight. Go ahead. This one, so you found your.
Yeah, in the line, whereas the mayor has proposed a budget for fiscal year 2020 fiscal year. Trying to think out the subject fiscal year. All in the features, no doubt. And then, right down at the bottom, um, yeah. The collective the mayor in demonstrate his commitment to Richmond Public Schools to add to.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. The main thought I have on, on this proposal is, um, following up to Mr. Candace's comment that that everyone on board should take up their position on the, um, on the budget, which I think, and the key keys, I think, to differentiate from the property tax. Um, my thoughts that the, the, um, the resolution as it's currently written is not, um, is not as concrete as it could be about the property tax, um, and that the, somewhat they, in, in that component. So if in fact our hope is to have a representation of how it feels about property tax, um, and perhaps the other tax increases, then I would suggest that the, uh, the model should be a bit more explicit so that, um, so that, that's very clear.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. If you can, um, stop at this moment. Ms. Morgan, as to me, um, I'm sure she probably has some more work to do to prepare, to be prepared for tomorrow. Thank you. But Morgan, do you have any thoughts to share with us tonight before you leave? Would you like, you don't have to, but if you'd like to share some thoughts.
See you next week.
Yeah, I'll be back on April fifteenth, so I can share some more.
And going you, you will have.
I'm trying to get to your basketball game tonight.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Charles, we'll have to join it up tonight. And thank you, Ms. Johnson. So the clerk will read those changes. Next item, next item is three point zero five, receipt reports from school board members on the staff committee, board side, next.
Mr. Young? I'm gonna, this is something I sent around electronically, but received this today. And specifically, this regard that match regional government school. And Ron had to be hired to be executive director. Um, there are those, our bringing out. He's proposing, he's proposing for the board consideration, but that match board consideration. A, something that pained me deeply from this project by around this table. Uh, specifically tuition increase. And, uh, just disregards what he is characterizing as a light shortfall, as I said. My sense this evening obviously not to initiate a long conversation, it's not political. I would obviously speak from a representative colleague's opinion on this. And so if you invite, if I know, you know, two now, three, four, this consideration, I can, uh, share that. But the drawing question is now a very, uh, we wouldn't want to take that. Uh, we'd invite everybody to, to provide some context where the new set of students. So you're talking about, considering on what this, the personal education, this, uh, even the smallest, little bit, like, could, could, like, do, do, uh, like, uh, because of, uh, yeah, uh, that, that's, that's why I, uh, uh, really like, uh, uh, so I do have a question, so I'm telling, tell us. We do not have any, um, so, uh, I do, I do, uh, uh. Just, just have a, just do what I'm. Uh, because of that, I have nothing to say to you, you know, that I was paying to, I know, you're not, uh, 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 you have to, to, uh, now the story is, uh, yeah, we should never just, uh, 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 uh. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. The time, so, uh, 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 uh. But you said, uh, so, so. So you, 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 you. And next to that, and this is the, I've been looking to board, uh, this is from our governance training. It's all of you, uh, uh, governance training, which is here on March sixteenth, FSBA.
So some of the, um, the key points. So one was noted that the different items were either, either already related to policy or in policy, and some of the items were, um, board norms. But one is, one of the highlights from our governance training, that our strategic plan is the board's framework that supports student achievement and and also as we continue improving our agenda processes. There was a suggestion to move hot button topics earlier in the agenda. And new business to include agenda requests for consideration and all items will be prioritized. And that is pretty, pretty much the standard. And keep visible law of all agenda requests and status title line maintained by our board clerk. And all agenda requests should be made in context of the strategic plan. So if board members, if we are adding agenda items under new business, please identify the strategic plan or orienting for the strategic request. Um, keeping in mind that the strategic plan is our framework. And as far as committees, formalize the finance committee as a standing committee. And when ad hoc committees are formed, nominate the chair and members in open meetings. So according to Robert's Rules of Order, the first person that the chair nominates, the process is, is done in open meetings. And you can refer back to Robert's Rules of Order. Decimating the committee chairman, if the chair wants or nominates the committee, she has the duty to select the chairman or chairwoman. Which she does by naming that person to the committee first. And the committee cannot elect another. And so also another, um, point was made that we all, we see Robert's Rules of Order, um, a book so that we can all be up to date on Robert's Rules of Order. This only.
It is online.
Right.
So unless it's, you know, amended, shortened, you know, Robert's Rules for Dummies, I don't know that we need to buy. The whole book is, it's available to us online, if you do search it.
Right. Just a thought. So, and, and that's, and that's a good thing. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. I'm really excited that, um, we're moving forward with these items. I think they're of critical importance and continuing to, to build trust and, um, and, and work more efficiently. Uh, a couple of thoughts, I, I think that this probably merits an, an agenda item itself. Um, several of these items, I think, the follow-up were policy updates, um, such as, uh, like, so for instance, my recollection as it pertains to discussion on Robert's Rules was that the, uh, the VSBA actually recommended that we move away from Robert's Rules and instead, uh, adopt a parliamentary procedure, it was a more, um, simplified approach. And so let me show us, remember that small ten dollar book, um, and give us the cheat sheet. And so that would require that we modify the policy that says that, um, that we follow Robert's Rules of Order and then, uh, instead with no parliamentary procedure. Um, and, uh, some of the language regarding the committee structure would require policy changes as well as a few other items. So I, I, I just want to make sure that we put closure around these things, um, so that, um, so that we're able to, you know, see them all the way through and, and, and finalize this process and they, um, you know, with the, with the, with the comprehensive approach.
So policy review, um, is already on the calendar, um, so I know our attorney and administration, you know, will get now on the policy review. So that, um, this board will have the schedule going forward regarding policy review. So this would probably be, Attorney Lily, you can help me, this will be out there.
Second, policy review.
Oh, oh. The process is, right, you, you've done, you've completed, you've completed some policy work in your tenure as a board. I believe some of the things that, at least I don't have a list in front of me from, that came from the governance meeting, but I believe that some of those, that all of those items would fit in for bylaw. So that we can bring those forward sooner rather than later. And, um, as far as your policy cycle meeting for this year, um, I would suggest that you move them with your, um, policies that you were reporting, um, for general assemblies that are, you know, doing policy that work at that time. The larger policy schedule that is going to be, um, developed in conjunction with the administration is forthcoming and that's something down the road a little bit. Um, but the bylaws, you all can affect, um, more easily than, um, somebody. But those are your bylaws, um, and does not necessarily apply, um, is the administration.
And so just kind of back in the school, we have questions.
Uh, no, you go first.
So some things we have already, um, started to implement such as live streaming in the back and school board summary after, um, every meeting on board docs. And the clerk has already uploaded the March eighteenth meeting. And she will continue to do that going forward. And zoning, that's already started the process, but also to add to it, to implement a policy in, in re-zoning to have annual conversations around capacity and re-zoning. And then glorified population and student movement every quarter. And so are there any other comments on, I would say it was this is the governance training. And thank the ad hoc committee for their work. Ms. Gibson, in the school.
So to be clear, can we confirm the timing then to make those policy updates? Um, uh, committees and, and those other things, if I'm understanding the, the, you don't need to wait for some too unexpected, we could develop that language and vote in one of our upcoming meetings.
If, if I may ask, if I can look at the list and then I can determine where it needs to fall appropriately on the schedule. I don't want to overpromise you something, we're going to talk about it on the next meeting, but let me look at the list and see what this overall look is. And would you get that back to me?
Ms. Gibson?
And one other item that I think falls under this umbrella of the governance is we've been talking about the live stream specifically. And I didn't, this is live stream right now, this is news to me, so, um, I want to make sure that the community knows how that works. But, um, also just the audio is not so good. I think it sounds like it's gone up a bit, but it's not consistently loud. And I think that the audio could use some improvement in this room, uh, both for the participants that are here in the room, but also for folks that are watching the audio and, you know, the video, um, now and to back. So if there, if there, I, I was, if there is a need to purchase new sound and if there are folks, my colleagues that have remaining funds in their discretionary funds, I would welcome the opportunity to make the necessary upgrades so that people can hear us.
Ms. Morgan, Ms. Wilson.
I just want to clarify about the live streaming. We did have it last board meeting, we don't have it this meeting, I can't explain why. And so I will, I'll make sure that's rectified for the next.
And with regard to the audio, I can just confirm with Mr. Matty that if we speak into our mics, does that help any?
It helps tremendously, yes.
So you need to speak into your mics or post it to the.
Ms. Gibson, before you start your next question, this door. Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Gibson.
Um, so, um, thank you, Ms. Wilson and Mr. Matty for the clarification. However, if there is indeed, if people are saying that even in this area, in this room, it's hard to hear, if we can at least get a, well, we're working to ask and so we know what we're talking about. That started our conversation. Or if there are other things that can, we have more of this, the mic or the other things that can, I just want to. Sound quality, um, and my.
And also the clerk has been looking at options to, to display the goals for the strategic plan that we can have displayed around, displayed around the room. So it can be a constant reminder to us as a board, because that is our framework and to the public for them to have those reminders as well.
Ms. Morgan? Ms. Gibson? Ms. Cosby?
Could you have just, um, a little bit more of clarification? I thought during our governance training, you know, as we talked about, so many people need but not necessarily just to put in board docs, but it would be sent out non-board docs. Um, whether it's, uh, these are needs and lots of bad, it's safe to go out or it could be accessible in addition to board docs, so multiple bases, multiple distribution channels.
So Ms. Wilson, if you can bring us that information at the next meeting. So again, this information, that's the. Next item?
The next item is item four, administration business four point zero one, receive an update from the joint construction team.
Pete Melf, I am joined by my colleague Bob Stone, who is the city's special capital product store here. He's also a fellow MBA alum like myself. We promised him I'd be here by tip off, so he can help me to keep that promise. Um, I actually want to skip down really quickly. And start off with the project budgets, because a lot of energy around this right now. So this is the all-in budget estimates for each of the three school projects. Um, it comes to about one hundred and forty million dollars, which is above the one hundred and ten million dollar mark that we previously discussed for the last couple of years. I don't want to point to any experience that the lunchtime number is wrong, but I can ensure that through our term processes, through the design firm search, through the construction manager risk term for firm search, these numbers are within market's tongue as it costs to build a school in rich, build elementary school, two of those, and middle school in rich. Um, I know we've answered your questions over the past release about these costs. Put lunchtime in a few minutes here today, this evening, to talk about just the cost and answer your other questions that might be out there.
Ms. Yon?
Thank you, Councilor, and, and thank you, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Stenner, for, uh, for all that you have done to be responsive to our questions. Uh, I do have a lot of questions, but I'm just going to ask one thing right now, uh, and then perhaps come back to the respect of one's time. But the first obvious question asked, and the first obvious question seems to me has to be, uh, what can we do? Presumably, GCT is out of conversation, or conversation plural, pertinent to how we can reduce these costs. So my first question, I think the first obvious question for anyone in a position of trust would be, how can we reduce these costs so we can build more schools?
I just start off by saying, these are project budgets, these are not the actual costs for these schools. Um, I think that as Bob can share, through the art, through the, the design work that we did, we're actually commenting under budget on one of the design costs that we, we put out there.
Yeah, like, so this is, it's still a work in progress. It's, it's not, it's not the final number. Right now, we're in the process, our C and R risk contractors are out there, I guess, soliciting bids from the subcontractor community on various work packages. The middle school in Green, we've gotten the site work packages in, they were about on their earlier estimates. They're in the process of getting the rest of the work packages, electrical, mechanical, HVAC, finishes, concrete, masonry. And over the next several weeks, they'll be bringing and presenting those bids to us and we'll be evaluating them. And I think there will be opportunity for, for value engineering suggestions that the contractors may put forward. We'll go to the JCT and might have to make some choices as to maybe something we wanted. We have to evaluate whether it's, you know, worth the premium that it brings in cost today. Already on the second line, the, I guess, construction assistance phase, architect services are a fair bit lower than what we're showing here, probably by about two and a half, three million dollars. And if we get more information, we'll continue to keep the, the RPS and through the JCT process. Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Morgan?
Okay. Thank you, guys, but I'm gonna not plug you for a minute. I would like to take a moment to respond to the letter that we sent back for from my colleagues last week to Mr. Stone and Stenner. First of all, although I was CC'd on it, I never received a copy for one, except for one major lead of Mr. Candace. It actually seems to me that the letter was actually intended for the press, as at least one reporter received it and published an article about it before I knew about. Secondly, I would like to state that I was never approached by any of the foresigners about the construction costs, even though I regularly attend the joint construction team meetings and would have been happy to discuss their concerns and help to find answers to questions if I didn't happen. I could have met with them one at a time, since we are not supposed to meet in groups of more than two without posting in advance so that others can attend, in the interest of transparency. Third, I am really puzzled about the aim of all this. The folks in my district and indeed on much of Southside are very excited about these new schools and expect a plan that they will in fact open in the fall of 2020. And this has truly seemed like a bucket of ice water on their expectations. Why are we doing this? And as a final note, just a very minor one, my name was Miss Bell in the list of people who worked to receive copies. I don't know which person wrote it. I don't know which person wrote it, but I would appreciate it if that would be corrected in any future communications. Thank you, Ms. Page.
Ms. Burke.
May I, let the comment ask a question? My question was going to be regarding both of the forums, but I must thank my colleague, because it was very disappointing after we just left out of truth. This is the seventh time around that we're not following the governance pieces that we put in place on that particular day, and here we go again. Everyone has the right to ask questions, but when we work together, we do it so much better. And I don't see anything as being hidden, or anything as being in place as a gotcha. In the end, it's about, maybe it needs about children. And what I understood from this breakdown is that this is really a draft, an estimate per se, and we're still receiving bids, so it's not actually stones of disappointment. I correct in thinking that?
That's correct.
All right, because in reading the newspaper and the television and the style, everything just threw me away, because I would be, I mean, maybe, maybe the next thing was given there, we were not in control on it, because the policy is that two or more board members get together for anything that it should be clear, and it was not. So that, that thus concerns me as the team piece, if anybody really cares about being the team, you know? But how are we going to function to continue, or is this to go on against order?
Ms. Door.
Um, I have a question. My question specifically, I was, I thought the response from the JCT in regards to her square foot funding made sense, except for as it relates to Green specifically and comparing Green to the model school that was built in the subject in 2016. My understanding is that that school cost about 30 million, and I just, I'm having a hard time reconciling that school to Green specifically. So if you, and I know there was leave, and that school wasn't leave, but I, I know that there were, there were fields with Green, and weren't able to, with this school, but I would love a little more.
We're still pulling that together, but a lot of it is the, the two-year escalations of construction costs at the time that I was building. If the, so for the site costs, just the sites in person, or the percentage of the cost, like this date for Bowser, drive there, you see, I mean, like, formally, is, is it actually different than the whole cost of the, um, that you're saying?
No, for this case, Echo, Bowser, Darren, subject is, is out in the middle of marketing, and it's, and out in the booties, I'm looking by even subject status. You know, here, we're, we're having to work on a close site with residences backed right up to us, we've got to work around an existing active school site for a year and a half. This is a, this is a process that we're going to deal with.
There's also specific program requirements out of the S revise on this school, so I might get working on it. So I'm going to have a poll analysis of the lives different.
Ms. Young.
My, my question, my next question, a lot of them. But my next question regards something akin to what Liz just spoke to, but specifically two schools that just opened up in January, just to our south, in Chesterfield. And I understand that, one, the total cost, so the cost per square foot, for example, Enon Elementary, I understand is less, but, so I have two questions. One regards, uh, the variance between the two schools, what, how much do you attribute that to the inflation that you cited, the JCT cited in the letter? And the second arguably pertains to something, Darren, you just spoke to, and that square footage, Enon has, understand, a smaller footprint per capita student than what we're proposing in ours, and when I inquired a moment ago about what kind of conversations JCT is having to reduce the cost, is that one of the conversations that we've either had, or we anticipate that we could have gone forward to reduce that cost? Hope that makes sense. Two questions for, or later.
Yeah, I think we need some time to look at that, and then we'll just figure out what drivers of cost are there. Regarding the, the value engineering, that's absolutely, anyway, that's the biggest concern in terms of the process of, you know, the actual numbers for what it costs for these schools.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. Speaking, speaking broadly to address some of the discussion, I want to make it, for me, this story about ensuring that there is fidelity to this process goes back to 2016. As a parent, as an advocate, I reviewed the previous administration's budget, and this was when I was advocating for more funds for schools. And in the 2016, I believe it was 2017, 2017 budget, it noted that the previous administration has spent $196 million on new school construction. And, and I wanted to understand as a citizen, you know, where those, those funds went. And so I submitted a FOIA, and that FOIA was bounced around from office to office for at least three months. And it was incredibly frustrating to get to the bottom of who, that, you know, where, I'm asking a simple question, right? Set in the budget that we had spent $196 million, show me how that broke down. After three months, I received a single-page spreadsheet from the city that added up to $182 million, with no explanation why there was discrepancy between the, the document, the budget document, which said that $196 million was spent, and this document that they sent that showed $186 million. So, so I have concerns about the fidelity and how the process interfered in the past. That concern has been reaffirmed through recent articles that, you know, that have nothing to do with schools, right? Monroe Park and with the Seventeenth Street Market. Clearly, there are issues. As a board, we experienced that issue in the last budget process, when we found out that city council had budget numbers that were entirely different than the budget numbers that we were looking at. Because of that discrepancy, no recurring revenue was provided to the school district. And so I was frankly aghast when that repeated itself, and city council had been provided with construction numbers that had not been shared before. This was also on the heels of our own budget process, which flew in the playface of transparency and best practice for me. And so, so all of these things were, were factors in deciding to, to write the letter. I do want to write, read, because, you know, the audience may not be aware, there was another letter that was sent by myself and Mr. Bart Balo, Mr. Jonathan Young, Mr. Dr. Sepini, and Ms. Patricia Cosby, and I would like to read it, just so that everyone's clear. This was sent to the attention of Ms. Lily, I can't remember who it was sent this afternoon. Said, "We have reviewed the response letter. While we appreciate the additional detail, serious questions do remain. Simply put, based on the estimated building costs we were provided just in September, our construction costs should be millions of dollars less. We are also concerned that several points in the city's response do not align with actual board discussions. Namely, our board did provide consensus to proceed with the third-party facilities plan cost estimate. Also, our board did not correct that the new school must open in 2020 at any cost. The letter notes that the city was aware that the $110 million estimate was low in September. We are disappointed this was not shared with the board. It is even more concerning to us that numbers which are now described as bad were used by the mayor to base his plan for school modernization as required by the voter referendum. It appears that work must now be redone. At best, all of these issues indicate a disconnect. At worst, they highlight a significant flaw that is created by removing school construction oversight from the school district. Our hope now is that the third-party estimate of the facilities plan is completed with expediency and with the full oversight of our democratically elected school board."
So on that note, it has, um, come to my attention, the reception of validation of an open meeting law regarding the first letter that was sent to the city and the picture in style briefly that included board members, and for transparency's sake, I'm going to state the board members' names, not for, um, just for transparency. So the picture included Mr. Young, Ms. Gibson, Dr. Sepini, and Ms. Cosby. So in reception, this validation of the open meeting law, because when you look at the Code of Virginia, it talks about as many as three members is a meeting. It was not properly noticed, and the article was a gathering of four of them, board members, and the picture was pertaining to the nature of the article, related to public business and school board business. And that's a concern. Because regardless if it's a meeting or an event, and that more than two board members are going to be in attendance, the clerk must properly notice board meetings, as well as any other events that board members may be in attendance. And that is a concern, and, um, it's a concern about the perception. And a lot of times, perception could be reality, and, um, and I would like, I mean, Ms. Mel, if she can just speak to how policy and the code can, you know, speaks to those, to those issues.
Just very quickly, Ms. Page cited to the, what she was referring to, just as commonly known as Virginia Freedom of Reformation Act, and it does include definition of a meeting. And we just commonly know, and, and the board needs to be ever mindful of the fact of, the fact that if three or more of you get together, or more than two of you get together, then it's for the purpose of discussing public business, and that conceivably is a meeting per the rules, and should be noticed as such. And certainly, you know, I can't speak to the, the content of what was discussed during the photo shoot or what have you, but just to bring that reminder to the board, I agree with what Ms. Page already said.
Dr. Sepini, please.
Thank you, Billy. Ms. Page. Hey, what up, Dan? I definitely agree that you couldn't have more than three, more than two. But I'm sure that most of us have been in situations in the past where more than two of us were in the same room, whether that was in a church, a restaurant, someone home, or anywhere else, or, you know, whether it was myself, Kirk, or even yourself in the same room. So, in that.
I just want to reiterate that the point of it is the discussion of public business, and certainly the perception, given the, the, the article and the nature of the article is, is what it was. And so, you know, I can only speak to that. I just don't want you to think that I'm saying that anytime you all get together, you're shooting, you're talking about family, you're talking about your weekends, you're talking about that, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about more than two of you getting together for the purpose of discussion of public business.
Ms. Young, then Ms. Burke.
I had a question for Mr. Simmons, Mr. Stone, relevant to numbers, but I'd gladly defer to ask that question, or not, or talk a conversation about this.
Ms. Burke.
Since my name was just mentioned as well, I, to take a picture and just speak on behalf of this new board, being individual as a group, I would never do that. So however it unfolds, perception that reached thousands and thousands and thousands of people, and in my district, I had several questions about what's going on, why weren't you at the meeting? But many people, a lot of constituency, understand the rules and expectations. But it goes back to the perception, and it goes back to what we addressed in Charlottesville at our retreat regarding working together as a team. Nothing's wrong with asking questions, that's our right. Nothing wrong with putting things out there that need to be addressed, but not for my own personal justification or glorification. So as was just stated by Ms. Horn, was that a political move? Or was that, I don't understand the purpose or the point, and I'm glad that you reminded us, but we all know what to expect. But I would dare not take a picture publicly and put it out there before the public, and not publicly see this one at hand, or public information.
Ms. Young.
Thank you, Chair. My question regards, from Mr. Simmons, Mr. Stone, regarding, and thank you for your patience. You referenced a moment ago that there may be some variance in regards to what the final numbers are and what we're talking about right now, this 140. And Mr. Stone, you've even cited a figure a moment ago, perhaps that you really thought. Do you have any, and this perhaps is unfair, so if it's unfair, please share, but do you have any idea of what that number could look like? Or, or a better way, Simmons, maybe let me ask it this way. Do you have any idea of what the percentage, so if we're talking about a budget of, let's just use the 140 million number, since that's now most frequently cited, what, if we look at other school districts, what that percentage of variance could look like? So in other words, what I'm asking you is, using value engineering, could we come back and say, you know, we're, you know what, RPS, you're right, we were able to, maybe we don't build an auditorium with 600 seats, we go to 400, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, do you have any idea of what that percentage could look like, using leveraging benchmarking other school districts? Hope that question made sense. So in other words, what I'm trying to get is, like, so we can have some appreciation for that number you said isn't a, decided isn't the final veto, and I understand that. I'm trying to get appreciation for some kind of proximity to that, that number.
I don't have the exact number right now. It could be on the order of magnitude of perhaps a couple million dollars per school.
Thank you.
Ms. Bart.
Yeah, I'll refer my follow.
Ms. Cosby.
Uh, thank you. So, um, just want to, the question was asked, what was the motivation? So if some agency was afforded in terms of certain, 30 million dollar difference in what we have, that has been awarded as actual versus estimate, and that 30 million dollars go towards new school? Now, for fresh lemon, I do believe that without the children's plan, we aren't just talking about, we spend the part of week. So if there is the old George with, and at one time there was another school, and we have another school, we have to go on there. have another school, we have to go on there. So, the question comes then, if we have or could possibly have another 30 million dollars, why not ask the question? Why not ask the question? And also, why not ask it if we know that certain processes, we talked about at the retreat, but there have been certain processes that are just broken, that are just broken in terms of people getting information that's needed? And let's just go to that.
Ms. Dor.
I'm not that sure.
And, and so, that's one thing. Second, and then, yeah, people should ask, why isn't the board asking these questions? Why wouldn't you ask? Why didn't you ask questions about the stewardship of taxpayers' dollars? Why don't you ask the questions about why there is such a discrepancy? Why not? This is something that the board should be asking, especially if there's a potential for more schools to be built from the facilities plan, if that is the, if that's the case. Now, this story broke from in the Free Press. Now, there was a Free Press article, we got a meeting after that, nothing was mentioned, nothing was reported. If the committee knew about this, if the committee knew about the discrepancy in the estimate versus what has been reported to be possible actual, why wasn't it not reported forth to the school board? So, those are the main questions. If we're talking about even having a green elementary school that we know might possibly be built to capacity when it is built, and there could be a possibility of getting another school, why not ask the question? And if we want to talk about board policy, you are so right, Madam Chair, you are so right. And as my colleague has mentioned, yes, there have been situations where there's been more, or three or four, as you very well know. So, we understand perception, okay, and if someone were to ask the reporter, just ask the reporter, how many people did you talk to at one time? No one's saying that. So, if we want to clear up the perception, let's ask them.
Ms. Dor.
Well, I think we should clarify the perception then, because there were reports of board members in the article talking about school board business, so if there was no open meeting violation, then let's fill that up. But it seems to me like we all know the open meeting rules, and so, so, yeah, that's fine. I really, I don't want to stand up here on myself, I can't make a political statement. I think that we need to figure out how to move forward. I think that everyone on this board has known that the JCT meets weekly, so I want to commend Ms. Owens, the only person unfortunately not, DCC'd the letter, or asked to sign the letter, or attending regularly. And I think those school board members that want to continue to ask these hard questions, I want to implore you to attend to those meetings. I don't have any problem with asking questions, I think it's free to have to ask questions. So, let's continue, and let's figure it out, and let's work together. You know, I have some issues about the, how we got to this point, but I'm interested in bringing that issue into our together.
Ms. Owens.
I'm just, with my quick research, this might help with some of the numbers. The Pre-Chair Middle School, when it was built in Suffolk, in the paper down there, they reported it as being built for 800. We're building the school on Hall Street in 2000. Now, I'm sorry, 1500. And Florence Bousser was built for about the same number, but it is, again, it is, it is a beautiful school, I'm looking forward so much to having it, and it is very much more complicated to build it in the middle of a city than it is to build it, and trust me, it is in the middle of nowhere. So, I just, I want to say it again, our kids deserve these schools, I'm so excited that we're going to build them, and great construction machines are roaring on Hall Street. Big dirt piles are being moved around on Hall Street, it's very exciting to see. Thank you.
Ms. Ballow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as Ms. Gibson noted, I ended up signing onto the letter that was sent out today. Ultimately, the biggest concern, obviously a really big concern here, is the balance of board oversight over what's going on with the JCT, what's going on with construction. I understand that, you know, they're having weekly meetings and that they're open to us. I would encourage that in the event of material developments, so if there is a significant change in anything that's going on, that the board get a report of some sort as soon as possible, in order to help us fulfill our roles as best stewards of the school system construction.
In the interest of moving forward, the third slide of the presentation is a recommendation from the administration to put forth an RFP to identify a third party to assess the true market cost of the remainder of the facilities plan. And so, I would like to know that the board blesses this endeavor, and once we have a sense of the precise cost involved, I will, of course, bring it back to the board for consideration. But we would like to move forward with great speed on this matter, given all that has transpired thus far. Thank you.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. So, my specific questions, or my reason why I personally continue to have concerns about the budget, are very specific to the estimates, the built-in cost estimates that we see from the, from the architect, and, you know, understanding that typically, construction cost, as my colleague, Ms. Dor, referenced in her keys about school pricing, typically about 30%, the numbers don't align, don't align with that. So, my ask would be that, understanding that we have gotten all the pricing from the contractor, that we do get more of a detailed breakdown, because I do want to ensure that if there is any, any truth or merit to the timing for the construction to be driving up costs, I want to make sure that, that we are able to, to look at that and make that decision before it's gone, you know, too far down the line. I, you know, having been a person that, you know, has some building experience by profession, recognize that there is a lot of, the way that this process is going from a timeline, you know, is somewhat unconventional, and I do want to ensure that that does not cost us such a significant amount of money that it could, you know, impact building other school. So, from a process, which is a moving forward, my request is that we get this more detailed breakdown in terms of cost. You know, when we saw those prices, I also wasn't clear why the architect estimates were like a two and a half, a three percent fee, and then the fees that were provided on the spreadsheet, you know, were different than that. But what I, I would like to ensure is that this process is as public as possible. And so, to be, to be fair, I haven't received an invitation personally to attend a JCT meeting, I don't know where they are held, I don't, you know, I...
Ms. Gibson. I need to correct you, because we have had weekly meetings, and board members are welcome to attend, but the clerk has to know in advance so that it can be properly noticed. It's already on the calendar, and so, if more than two board members want to attend, you're welcome to it. And we also receive minutes from our weekly JCT meetings, as well as we have monthly updates from the JCT team, so, and the minutes on board dock. So, again, we do not want to mislead the public, that board members do not have the opportunity to attend these weekly meetings, to ask any question that you may have, because, yes, we as board members, it's our responsibility to have oversight, but our babies are waiting. So, you can continue, but, um...
It's okay. I don't mind that I was interrupted, because I know that this is a really passionate thing, you know.
And I apologize for that, but I wanted to make it clear to the public, for public consumption.
So, so, I, I think that we can do better in terms of the, in terms of this process. I don't believe that it works. I have a full-time job, me and my colleagues have full-time jobs, attending a meeting once a week at 1:00 on Thursday is not easy for me to facilitate. I do believe that the meetings should be public, and, and...
We'll start with the...
Public in that they are provided area for people to sit, and so, you know...
If more than, if we have...
Has there been people from the community that have attended these meetings?
No, but that's not...
Okay, okay.
But it's a public, it's a public meeting, Ms. Gibson, so I do not want, no, we are not going to sit up here and mislead the public. These meetings are public, it's on the calendar, and if board members want to attend, you are more than welcome to attend and ask questions.
Okay. So, but the public has not been engaged. And so, I, I think that we as a board should have, I mean, there is, there is simply no excuse for the fact that we did not have access to this budget documentation. There's, I mean, the truth is, is that, like, I mean, look, our board approved to go forward with a, a, an estimate exercise, was never informed that it was, it had disappeared, and then I had to ask what happened to it, and now we're being told that the board decided not to do it, right? I mean, there are, there are issues to what, there are issues, right? And my ask is that these meetings be more public, that maybe public enough that the public come, and, and that we figure out a way to ensure that moving forward, we do not have a scenario where City Council would press has information that the board does not have access to. Yes.
Ms. Gibson, you just noted yourself the date and time of the JCT, Thursday at 1:00. So, clearly you are aware of exactly when it occurs. As has been stated previously, it has been publicly noticed. All minutes are publicly available and publicated to board backs. And so, the insinuation that something is happening at those meetings outside the view of the public is frankly offensive. Having sat through those meetings, week after week after week, having Ms. Owens be there, having Ms. Burke be there, having Dr. Sapini be there, having Ms. Page be there, I believe Ms. Dor may have attended one as well, they have been open, they continue to be open. Thursday, 1:00, welcome on the 17th floor, number one. Number two, the insinuation that somehow the speed with which we are attempting to build these schools is responsible for the escalating cost is also not accurate. We specifically asked this question, and the response that we got was, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. If you slow it down, you have to have the construction crews and the site management on site, not just for a little longer, for a lot longer, because we're not going to open school in November, we're not going to open school in February, we're going to do it at the beginning of the year. And Ms. Owens was at that meeting, I believe, when we asked that specific question, am I correct? And absolutely, we should be building these schools as fast as we possibly can. Anyone who's been to Green or been to Mason knows we need those buildings as fast as possible, because kids deserve them now. Yes, the initial numbers were wrong, but the numbers we have now reflect the fair market value of building these schools in Ridgefield in 2019, and to ensure that it doesn't happen again, I have reiterated the proposal to have a process of identifying the party, what the accurate costs are. And I will say, Ms. Gibson, when I first raised this question, was first raised this idea of a third-party proposal, you were quite critical. When we go back to the beginning of that discussion, and I remember distinctly having a conversation at this Davis, and asking that we not do that normal Richmond thing where everybody gets their own set of numbers, but instead, we get one set of numbers that everybody can agree on, and that is accurate. The reason we didn't proceed is because when the estimates came back at around $200,000 to $300,000, clearly that was beyond what this board was willing to do. And that was clear, because when I raised the question of it being nearly $50,000, there was a grade of not the cost. But again, we welcome the oversight, we welcome the scrutiny of this process, and so, anybody who wants to come Thursday at 1:00, or anybody who wants to read the minutes, they're all up there, or anybody who wants to ask a question can submit that question to the JCT, and we can do what we've done over the last several months, which is work through the answers, find the solutions, and move forward for it.
And also, just going to say, we don't have any new questions or additional information to ask the JCT team. We do have a recommendation from the superintendent about approving the instruments of RFP to engage in a, in a third-party party to review and update the cost of outline in the approved December 2017 facilities plan going forward. Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real briefly, two real quick questions, I think they're real quick. One, you referenced, so we have, we know who will offer, correct me if I'm wrong, we know who will offer our general contractors, RGC, people who are just waiting, some of them will secure subs, is that...
For the city as they code, under the CMN risk, construction delivery method, the CMN risk contractor, if he only self-performs 10% of the work, he has to sub out the method of 90%. So, through a public bid process, and that's what they do the process.
The 90%. Thank you, thank you. And then the second question, also really concise, is, you talked a lot about a moment ago, the value of engineering, and you and Darren put appropriately, said, hey, yeah, we're going to be coming back to you. Do you have any idea of the timeframe, the chronology of that, when we, when this body could expect through, represented by one JCT, or through three, or both, when we as a board would say, okay, here are some, here are some opportunities for us to evaluate, perhaps in terms of reduce costs, and we may, of course, decide not to, but we'll have an opportunity to review some of that potential reduction of cost, that timeline, when, when should we expect that?
I move the, um, this all six... Okay. Okay. I move that we approve the issuance of an RFP to engage an independent third-party to review and update the cost outlined in the approved December 2017 facilities plan going forward, starting phase, not, not that part. Just the 2017 facilities plan, period.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke. Any discussion? Ms. Gibson, Ms. Young, Ms. Dool.
Thank you. So one, one last thought, I think, um, I understand, you know, I'm trying to the thought that, um, that, that we are embracing scrutiny. I, I, I just want to put it out there that it doesn't feel like we embrace scrutiny so much. And I think, um, you know, we do want to encourage everyone to be asking questions. And this doesn't feel like encouragement to me. Following up on the point regarding your process to get estimates for the price estimate, I, I, this is the first that I've heard that there were estimates that have already been received. And so I would ask that, that documentation of those prices be shared with the board. Because I also questioned the two hundred thousand dollar cost for this particular engagement. It seems incredibly high.
I don't have any such documentation. These were estimates that I received orally from my conversation with you. And so that is why, again, this RFP process would be intended to get the actual estimates that we could then worry about and discuss.
Ms. Young, Ms. Dool.
I, I do I leave her?
Uh, just a question. After we, um, if we approve this, will there be, if the cost of this study comes in, will there be another time to approve the cost? Because I am a little concerned about, um, the scope of this and how much money it is, et cetera. So I'd like to approve the RFP, but I'd like to read this after it seems, I wish we had done it in September because then we wouldn't be in this situation right now. But, um, since we're already building these schools, it seems like it's we're doing it now for schools that could be built five years from now. So I'm not sure, quite sure how useful that will be. So.
Just two quick points. One, yes, we will not proceed until we're through with the board to discuss the cost. Two, then part of this process would be to embed in the analysis and escalator cost for what it would cost to build a school in 2023, 2024, 2025 using historic data, not as was known before, which was keeping this plot for self-interest.
Dr. Spiny, then Ms. Young.
Is that cost for RPS or is that, as you say, like, stated last time?
I think first step is let's do the RFP, see how much it is, and then we can discuss with the city, the split. And that would be my intention. But I think we can get the process started on, on the RFP and see how much it is.
Ms. Young.
Yeah, just, just real briefly. I mean, I know my candid, my constituents are want us to spend money on quirks and order and not on studies. So I'm asking a belated point that is already made in the process. So I'm reporting to coming back, we can evaluate it.
All the questions?
The motion was made by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the issuance of an RFP to engage an independent third-party to review and update the cost outlined in the approved December seventeen, 2017 facilities plan. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Scotty?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Dr. Spiny?
Yes.
Ms. Dool?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Motion passed, if you can assist.
Next item.
So enjoy the tip-off, guys. I'm trying to whip you.
Thank you.
The next item is four point zero two, receiving update on the number one, I don't understand it. JCT Education and Strategic Action.
My apologies. I was distracted by urging you to be a long time to go watch the game. We, um, continue to engage with the DOE on the Monday of Thursday. And we have our next, um, CAF meeting coming up. Ms. Dazo, can you share the date?
Our meeting is on the eighteenth. We also have two days of asset mapping on the sixteenth.
So... Yes, and the asset mapping is, uh, a way to sort of identify all the programs and such that are going on to help streamline, as I talked about earlier, with respect to that. And the eighteenth will be about budget and operations. Thank you.
Any questions? That's all.
The next item is four point zero three, receiving update on the state.
Good evening, school board. This update is on the letter of intent and the upcoming transfer data. The letter of intent, as some of you know, was resented to teachers electronically on Thursday, the twenty-first of last month. And as of, um, last week, the results are, uh, that we had fifty, over almost sixteen hundred total responses from our teachers. Eleven hundred eighty-six of our teachers are returning. One hundred and sixty-seven will be transferring, twenty-one retirements and forty-one resignations. As I said, that was as of last week. We have different numbers this week. But in comparison to this point last year in the process, we have, um, actually less retirements this year, two more resignations, and the number of transfers has increased, possibly due to the board approval change in the transfer policy that was approved at the last board meeting.
Just to clarify, it was administrative, it was administrative.
Oh, yes, for each, oh, yes, that's correct. Sorry, board saying that. Um, and the next item is on the upcoming transfer fair that will be held on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of this month at Cuban High School. Just to let you know, um, as I just stated, uh, the transfer policy has been, the administrative procedure has been amended. So now any teacher or RPS will be able to interview with any principal to transfer into projected vacancies for the upcoming nineteen twenty-two school year. Just in addition to the transfer fair, we are also planning, uh, two general job fairs. One in late April, early May, and a second, um, in late May. Any questions?
If I just may add, one thing, we received a few questions about the, uh, timing of the transfer fairs, which were during the school day. So those fairs will be after school hours.
They're late afternoon?
Yes.
Thank you. So if we have this information, we know where we stand in terms of teachers who are returning or who resigned or retired. So do we have, since we have anything else outside of this, do we have anything, or as we know, where we stand in terms of how many people we have to hire? Teachers from the top, you know, you know.
Not at this point, because this, what I have here, but I don't think this is, I don't think we're... We actually, we actually, at this point, we don't. For each school building, we are planning on gathering that data, but at the conclusion of all our job fairs, because at the job fairs, offers are extended, um, to potential new hires. And in addition, the transfer fair will also be one of that.
I'll add, we use historical data. So we know what the hiring has been over the last several years, and that is a good benchmark. Obviously, we wanted to compare what the data through the letter of intent process this year looked like compared to last year to see if there's any significant deviation. It seems like things are trending fairly similar to what we saw last year. And so I think a number of folks we hired last spring is probably a good proxy for what we're going to need to do this spring. Obviously, we want to get that number from where, as, as, as time moves on. I think what will be key over the next several months is not just the number, but, um, the actual specificity of the types of, uh, subjects and grades and whatnot. Obviously, we have that for individuals who are self-identifying, but more will come up over the next several months, as is normally the case. Once we continue to build that, we target our work with that.
Uh, thank you. Is fairable, um, for our next meeting? Can you share that historical data?
Sure.
So that we can understand what the targets are. I mean, I understand you have some job fairs, but you have to reach a certain target.
The next item is four point zero four, receiving update on the facilities plan.
Yes. All right. So the first slide of this presentation is the goals with the revisions, as was discussed the last time. You'll see the third bullet of number two. Expedite student work and law facilities after resuming pure variety of matters, including new school contractors as well as supplemental consolidation disclosures with a notation revised so that we have the record what was, um, voted on last. Next slide is, um, our best effort at putting forward committee structure based upon the feedback that we received, both in person and via email, uh, Mr. Young, Ms. Dool, I believe maybe one or two others. I apologize if I am not recording at this moment. Uh, the proposal is the following. Now, we have, uh, two committees. One, the resuming advisory committee, or RAC. Three, the board members, uh, two committee appointees from each board member. So each board member would just pick two people who do not have a selection process. You just notify us who they are, and three appointees from the administration. Purpose broadly speaking is to, we guide the demographics room based on the board's about the goals and developing three to five proposals for consideration by the school board and the community. And then to help guide the process of iterating on those proposals once we get feedback from the board and the community as well. Estimated frequency for these meetings would be twice per month. Because we would have three board members and believe in transparency. They will be public meetings, so they will be public in the notes. Second committee would be, um, this rolls off the tongue, the vacant non-instructional surplus property made for chartered and EPC. Again, three board members and up to five subject matter experts, um, that the administration would appoint. Their job would be to gather information, no recommendations being made, or just gather up information, compile a list of all vacant, non-instructional and surplus properties, determine the legal title holder and current estimated value of all such properties, explore and document different financial mechanisms to maximize benefit to RPS if such properties were to be sold or redeveloped. For example, destroy tax credits, opportunity zone credits, and so on. Clarify and document the steps necessary to sell or redevelop such properties so that the board would know what would be involved if that were the desire of the board. And again, no recommendations, no decision-making authority, merely information gathered and body, uh, the report out to the board. And again, thinking probably twice per month, although there might be a trend with, obviously, to do the work and gather.
Ms. Dool, before you go, I'm going to take the liberty to, uh, I am super excited about Committee Two. It's something that I've wanted to do for a while. And I think gathering this information and leveraging the expertise in our community is super, um, can be super powerful. I also have been talking with my councilman, Addison, who would like to do some of everything on the city side. So I think there's probably some opportunities for sharing best practices, can be getting some more capital dollars allocated to RPS. So I am so enthusiastically chuffed. Thumbs up for Committee Two. I would love to serve on it. But I will, that may have passed along.
Uh, yeah, I really like, uh, I really like almost all of us. So I don't think I have the words for it. Any two cents to add to the EPC grade? Let's do it. Not only, I like the EPC so much that my only recommendation would be, for our consideration is the, uh, the next up final bullet relevant to the Committee Two, that, uh, we would adopt something like that for Committee One upfront. In other words, uh, what I would invite for our consideration is that Committee One initiate the process, like, is identified there. That that information, in the same way that Committee Two gathers information, presents information, et cetera, within comes loss to the board, we would essentially develop this three, five proposal. And then they would go back to Committee One to scrutinize the ups and the downs, pluses and minuses, uh, of any proposals that we put together and system of information, and also we have to, as a board, vote on it. So it's, so really, to be clear, I know, um, not be clear, but it's really just inverting. So my idea, uh, for it to work would just be to invert the process, partly invert the process for Committee One. So in lieu of them actually saying, here are three or five proposals, school board, signature, final, considered. Instead, they would bring this information, just like with EPC, we would then put it in the vote, and then we would send it back to Committee Two, Committee One. RAC, is that what it is? The RAC for them to kind of say, okay, school board, say, resume, here are, here are the strengths and weaknesses, opportunities perhaps, relevant to each of those.
So you're saying the second, I'm sorry.
So the RAC, just like the Committee One, RAC.
All right. So you're saying Committee Two then reports back to Committee One.
No, 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 no.
So what are you saying?
My, let me see if I can take a snap. My understanding is that he would like Committee One. Um, instead of, as it's written right now, there are three to five proposals that come to the board at the end of their work. Mr. Young is proposing that there's a step in between, where, uh, the Committee One gathers the information, presents it to the school board. This school board then develops three to five proposals, and then it's sent back to that committee for their opinions, and then it's sent back to us for...
Every...
Okay, well, I...
Yes. I made. Well done on that encapsulation. With respect, I don't know what the committee does then. And my concern is that this board is then going to have to schedule a significant number of very long meetings, very much they're going to have to come up with the proposals. If that is the will of this board, God bless. But then I want to just make sure we're all clear. clear about engaging in that process. I don't really know that there is a role for the committee then, other than as any member of the public to say, what do you think? This was an effort to try to streamline a little bit the work forward to say, all right, if we have whatever it is, thirty people, each of you get to pick two representatives, all get together in a room, and come up with a series of proposals, that should at least give you something to work with, that is not so far out of left field that it would be a good starting place. Then you tear it all up at a board meeting and say, we like this, we don't like this, go back, and come back with some more proposals. But if this body wants to come up with the proposals, God bless, I just think you need to schedule a lot of time.
Look, Ms. Cosby.
Oh, okay. I guess my just overarching thought is this, is that we said in our last meeting that we understood some of the breakdowns had to do with communication, and that whatever entity was created, that there would be frequent opportunity for the committees to report to the board along the way. To me, that doesn't necessarily mean that board's going to work with proposals, but it does mean that we do have check points. So that is, that's the interpretation.
Yeah.
Ms. Young.
Felicia's really much smarter than I am. Uh, yes, I think that's, 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 that's really the motivation and purpose for where I was coming from, but, 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 I, I, to this particular point, it does, you know, I'm, I'm not naive to the fact, you know, I think every, nor is anybody around the table, that it does lengthen the pro, it does lengthen the process, but I just, I think that we would all agree, because it's such an important task, I'm okay with that, if it needs more public participation.
May I offer a potential verging solution here? Though it is not stated, we could state that the RAC would report out at every board until a resigning process is completed. And since it will have three board members, it will be a public meeting, publicly, and then it's will be public, everything will be public, so everyone will be available to participate, but also, at every board meeting, we've got a standing agenda item, or standing agenda item, where they come and come report out, and then if there's pushes or questions, the board can share that with them, and they can go back and keep that.
Ms. Owens, Ms. Gibson?
I concur that I would like to have the firm and the committee come up with some proposals first, because this is a really complicated, it's really complicated. When you're talking about this little subdivision and this little thing, and it's kind of like, you know, I hesitate to use the word gerrymandering, but it's similar. It's, it's where are we going to put these students, and somebody's going to be unhappy because the kids across the street are going to go to a different school, and for us to try and figure that out all by ourselves, I think somebody needs to work with the team to come up, and if, if I'm not on the committee, I know I can go to the meetings, and I can bend the ear of the people who are on the committee, because I can say, listen, you better not divide that subdivision into two different schools. Please try to come up with another way. I mean, it's open, and, and we're all going to be, we're all going to be held accountable for it in the end, but this just seems like a much more efficient way to get started, is to have this committee, and it's still a good size, working on the proposals to start there.
Ms. Gibson.
Yeah. Gerrymandering is exactly what I want to avoid.
I hear you.
So that's why I think that this is such a, this is obviously a very sensitive topic, and, you know, I appreciate that the structure allows everyone to pick people, but I, I definitely believe that there is no group that is more democratic than the group that is sitting at this table, and, and so I, I, I have caution with putting on this responsibility, which is one of the most important responsibilities that we have as a board, onto another group. So my, my ask, as we have been talking this evening about what constitutes and how we define a public meeting, my ask is that the meetings that are held are held in this room so that folks are able to attend, and, and are recorded, so that, because, you know, going back to JCT, the meetings that I've seen from, from those meetings are, are lacking, you know, substance that I'd like to see, so, but I do think that if they were recorded, that would give more transparency and assurance for me in that process.
Ms. Page?
Um, I support the committee structure, because it gives, is allowing the public to really, to buy in to this process, because the decision that we will be making, that will impact our students and families next school year, the community must get buy-in, because this is going to impact them, and making decisions, and asking of public participation, the families, our students, we'll make a grave mistake, because this is a comprehensive resigning agreement, that's going to affect elementary, middle, and high school, so I support the committee structure, the buy-in of the community in this process, we've done it before, and the support that you'll receive, because the community has really provided their input. They have buy-in to this process, so.
So it seems like we have consensus around the table to approve these two committees with two changes to Committee One, or two additions to Committee One. One is that meetings will be recorded and in this room, and two, that there'll be a standing agenda item for report outs on this committee to the school board. Ms. Owen?
I'm, I'm not sure that we want them to be in this room, just because sometimes they're going to be spreading out maps and working on tables, maybe it's, and they might be, sometimes they might be in schools where they got a lot of tables to work with, so I don't know that that's an absolute requirement. I, I like that they are recorded, and I think we can, we can work that out, but I just envision people with maps.
We will hold them here and at schools as necessary for the recording.
As long as it's recorded, it won't be too much, I don't know what's the end of it. Ms. Gibson?
My, my preference would be to find one location that it is at regularly, just so that, that people know, you know, if they want to participate, and they want to attend, this is, this is where it would be, so if we could find a nice central location that hadn't put them out of space, and parking, that would be even better.
Ms. Page?
Um, one note, if we just select one, one location that does not create atmosphere of equity, if we are proposing to do something like that, I would say one north of the James and one location south of the river, because as we, equity, that's one, that's going to be a problem, if we just designate one location.
Ms. Gibson?
I, I actually, I mean, since we know a lot of our guiding issues is the south of the James, I would have no, I, I think it would make a lot of sense for the location to be, you know, a south side location for that reason.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, just, I think, I think you summarized the consensus well, but I just want a little more clarity about, Felicia and I were talking about the, the reporting requirements, sort of, can we elaborate a little bit more on our expectation of that?
I, for the purpose of the motion, what I put is just a standing agenda item for report outs at school board meetings, if you'd like to add, add to that, I can, I think we can make sure that, or whomever is on the committee from the board, can make sure that those report outs are substantive, but if you'd like to add to the, the motion, we don't.
Um, I just want to reiterate, I strongly feel that it should be one location designated south of the James, and one location designated north of the James, equity, because regardless where you're located, we all are stakeholders in making decisions, that's going to impact everyone.
What is the will of the board? Do we want one location or two locations?
All right.
Or let the committee decide?
As long as I understand the intent, don't say the same.
Yeah. Okay, let's, let's leave that as a committee decision, but we'll share folks' feedback and expectations. Okay, can I get a motion?
Yes. I move.
You ready?
I, this is the motion to, I move that there are two committees as presented, with additions to the committees, to Committee, to One.
To Committee One.
To Committee One, number one or eight, let's say eight, meetings are recorded, and the standing agenda item at school board meetings to report out.
Substantive.
Seven.
Sure. Add substantive and add every.
All right. Call for a vote?
Oh, any discussion? Call for a vote?
Standing agenda item at school board, at every school board meeting, gives substance. The motion was made by Mrs. Burns and seconded by Ms. Owen. To approve the two committees as presented, with additions to Committee One, A, meetings are recorded, and B, standing agenda item at every school board meeting with substantive, with substantive requests. Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, no, but I would just like to record to note that I am willing to, because of my concern with having the committee vet the final options.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes, Ms. Burke.
Yeah, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Eight more?
Now, I know it's getting late, but we did say that we were going to activate approved committees, assigning people to those committees, so I know we should adhere to that best practice. I will start while rolling, I would like to volunteer to be on Committee Two.
Okay.
Who else wants to be on Committee? Five more.
Ms. Owen on one. Ms. Cosby on one.
Two, I mean, one.
Ms. Cosby on one.
How long have you been more?
She also wants to be on.
One more. For one. Ms. Page. All right. Ms. Page, Ms. Cosby, Ms. Owen, for Committee One. Mr. Young? Ms. Page?
I would say.
Okay.
So.
Ms.
Another board member.
Ms. Cosby and Ms. Owen on Committee One. Mr. Young, did you want to be on Committee One, too?
I was going to put those Committee Two.
Ms. Burke, I'm Committee One. All right. The three ladies at the corner in Committee One, Mr. Young and Ms. Door, and one more on Committee Two.
I, um, nominate.
You can do that. You can do that. You want a one? You want a one?
I.
Well, and then, 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 and then,
... And I'm not sure if I have the feedback since I last discussed it. They were very sensitive, very very sensitive feedback received. And so we made the draft, you know, you're not submitting that kind of draft pretty early today. And they not made 60 to 100 or 60% of that. Correct? He's tired of me, he's... Okay, I see now. The... I'm ready to add the... Again, 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 again. So, the next... The best thing is that the... I think that you have to pay this person's name, because students do not afford a little bit of experience in a stupid way, unless it's that. And you know, that person may pay it if you see that, and it's not for them. And, uh, by the way, yes. Yes, that is the name that they... We didn't have any bad ones, as I can hear them. Those didn't have guys. You're correct. Uh, 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 no, sorry. I don't know what I'm doing. No, 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 no. Uh, 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 uh. So, you did, you did, you did five, you did two, three, four, five, six. Or students do not afford. I think that is, uh, 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 uh. It's not, it is not. Uh, 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 uh. My, I go through something, the class, I can't, I can't, uh, 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 uh. Should not be doing, uh, uh, uh. So, it's a make-up day. The half-day is the day. The half-day is the day. If you don't have to do it, maybe, okay, then it's free, and it's a day, and still it's only that. Correct? So, obviously, change it to a year.
No, actually, I don't know that. I think, uh, not as long as we do. I think it should not have, um... I mean, it should not have been blue. It should just have been, uh, discussed a little bit after, Michelle.
That is what we are. Like, things are, my understanding is that a student half-day, and a second half-day is a professional practice half-day. And after you... So, it's not, it is, you cannot have necessary, it's a break-up. It's not how the students do not afford exclusively for green, because there is not instant seeing green for students.
Yeah, so we can check. We need her on this. Yep.
Thank you.
That's quite the catch.
Yeah.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to share some of the things that, um, input that I received, and I apologize if some of them may have been addressed. Um, some of the things that folks have noted, um, and this may not be included for this one, but just some, just bringing these things up for awareness, to keep in mind perhaps for next year's calendar. Um, folks noted that they, um, you know, wish that there was still more of the, um, green, green boxes for, um, for, um, professional practice. Some folks noted, some, some folks noted that, um...
You say that again? I concur.
Yes. Um, and, 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 you know, the market agreed. Some of them noted, just because there's a lot of things, like the terminology was different, that they felt like there was just some confusion, because there was a lot of new terminology, and so wished that some of the language was more consistent, for clarity. Um, uh, by and large, the overwhelming feedback that I received was just the number of teacher pre-service days. Um, and, uh, I think that for us in the district, you know, while professional development is still, um, you know, how it, how it looks moving forward, there's lots of question there. I, I can understand why, um, a lot of the, the staff questioned the need for so many days, and particularly because that was a, a difference from last year to this year. Um, I think there were also some folks that, you know, have already made, uh, you know, summer plans, and so I think, given the fact that we're adopting this somewhat late, and, you know, um, you know, I, I want, I want to make sure that if, you know, folks had already committed to things happening in August, like what, what, what will happen to ensure that, um, you know, they're not punished, because, because they didn't anticipate having the, the, uh, those days added beginning of the year. Um, they, in, kind of in the long, that same vein, um, there was a lot of feedback to, to try to have this process happen sooner, um, and so that, you know, people also want to go to a deal on vacations, and so, you know, having to wait now, it, it, it limits in terms of being able to, um, plan, so, and also as a parent, it's even nice to have the schedule finalized sooner. Um, and then, uh, one, one suggestion I received was to, uh, perhaps maybe for folks that are, are more tenured, is, is there a way to differentiate the amount of professional development, or, you know, what that pre-year PD looks like? Um, there was some concern about, uh, you know, that the early dismissal, the two-hour did not allow a lot of time, um, basically two hours for, um, their, their planning and such. Um, and, uh, one teacher noted about, I guess this was many, many months ago, when I guess every Wednesday was like a half-day, and, um, and so I think that there was some sentiment among teachers that, you know, over time, their planning time has been cut a lot, um, and now, you know, they even have to use the little amount of planning time that they have for IEP, IEP needs and such. Um, and so, uh, and so, you know, that, that is a sentiment that I think is probably echoed by, by, by many.
Thanks for that feedback.
Ms. Owen, then Ms. Cosby.
Well, I was gonna make a motion now. Somebody gonna tell me not to do that?
Yeah.
Well, you can talk about it after.
No. It's kind of along the same lines.
Ms. Cosby?
Kind of along the same lines. Okay, so, I just want to make sure it's clear, for April 20th is a makeup day. Just to be clear, so right now, is the parent-teacher conference, early dismissal. It, it is a makeup day. No early dismissal, what do you say?
We would not do an early dismissal.
You would not do the early dismissal? It would still be the parent-teacher conference day?
We, so I think this is the tension, uh, try to balance lots of pieces of feedback. I think we would suggest that, uh, we find, that our teachers find alternative ways to meet their parents during that, during that course of that week at their convenience. Um, but that's the nature of a makeup day, is that it unfortunately disrupts the schedule. So, there would not be an early dismissal, but we would still encourage schools to find alternative ways to do that.
I know that we don't have to use any of our makeup days this year, because the length of our school day is such that we should not need to use. Hopefully, we'll be able to save. Thank you. Uh, uh, right. Um, but sometimes we do have winters, that we do need with it. Um, so, so instead of just thinking that we might not have to use it based on this year, you know, maybe from years ago, we did have to use it, I think, because, you know, we had significant days when we were out. I just want to clarify, that's all, just to be sure.
Yep.
Unless there's, um, anything else that appears incorrect or confusing, what I would, what I would suggest we could do is, um... For your makeup dates, in that little box that says makeup dates, under the, the actual dates, maybe we could do a quick little descriptor of, like, if we need this makeup date, here is what will actually happen.
It will be until the full day.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Just so it's cluttered by it, and then we'll fix green on March 13th, with those two modifications with the board.
I still move.
Second. So, it's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke, to approve the school calendar as amended for 2019, 2020 school year. Any discussion? Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In addition to the feedback, uh, that we heard from Ms. Gibson, I've also spoken with a number of teachers who provided me with some, uh, feedback in particular with regard to the, uh, pre-service period. Um, you know, there, there are teachers who are understandably, probably because of past years, who may be frustrated in some way, because they, uh, felt as though their time wasn't being used as efficiently as possible, or didn't have enough time to set up their classrooms, and things of that nature. So, uh, I am curious to know what we're doing to encourage, uh, the allowance of times, time for teachers to set up their classrooms, and to take care of the pre-planning and things like that, in the blue of just, uh, deadline meetings to spread that through you.
Well, there, there are no deadline meetings in professional development, uh, as designed, um, by our team moving forward, and I know that there's a legacy here, and there's a lot of noise about, remind you all in September, what many of our teachers shared, which was, even the day we did last year, there was a meaningful difference. Um, that said, um, when you're trying to work with over a thousand teachers, people have lots of different needs, um, and can have different perspectives. One of the reasons we're extending these days to eight days is to provide just that, is there's really three things that need to happen during the school pre-service, as we see it. One is teachers need sufficient time to prepare independently. Classrooms, team meetings, understanding their student records, their schedule, planning their lessons, et cetera. The second is the schools, um, the school leader's ability to bring their school team together, and align as a school team on critical things, such as culture, um, how it, how people respond to setting up a sort of justice, things like that, that really need to happen at the school level, expectations, um, for instruction, et cetera. And then third is, as a division, aligning really on the rollout and training, um, and really collaboration around, um, instructional programs and curricula. And one of the things I've heard a lot from our teachers is, in the past, the division has spent a lot of money adopting curricula or adopting programs, but not provided the training, um, necessary to utilize or take advantage. Um, and particularly, you know, when you think about all the things that, um, going into instructional planning, trying to cram that into one day, um, creates a lot, creates tension among those three needs. So, they need to align as a division on, um, supporting teachers in rolling out our, you know, curriculum instructional plans, two, schools rolling out their culture, climate work as a school team, and three, preserving teacher time in classrooms. Um, and so, that, those three things feel very important, and so when we talk with principals about, um, how those eight days are allocated, we will be specific that time does need to be preserved for teacher setup. Um, we also want to be honest that time also needs to be valued for school leaders to bring their staff together, and that we, as a school division, need to move forward together, um, and bring teachers together to collaborate. Um, is that specific enough, or would you like a bit more, um, detail, and we can bring back to you?
I wouldn't be a good board member, but it has to work.
But, if I may, I'd like, like, we will clarify, um, and I will, uh, issue guidance to schools to protect time for teachers to set up their classroom. I'll be extremely explicit about that. I love setting up my classroom. It's a very important activity to be ready for the year. I love so much that I redecorated the conference. And, um, and that is time that should be for teachers and teachers alone, unidroped, and we'll make sure that that is protected, and that I will issue that time as a precaution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And board members, also please be reminded that we approved the calendar last year, March 19th, and the year before, it was later than that, so we're in approval, yes.
We will continue to came together, um, for a year. And, uh, I think this was a very good opening experience this year, and, uh, it will be helpful for us.
Call a question?
The motion's made by Ms. Burke, seconded by Ms., I'm sorry, motion's made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Burke, to approve school calendar as amended for the 2019, 2020 school year, Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Cepini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Can I just take one quick moment? This is the best formatted calendar ever. Instead of the last year with all that confusing stuff, this is so clear. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to recognize, um, Bridgette, um, Michelle's team, who did all the graphic design. She's amazing, and she made this come alive, so. I agree. It's very beautiful.
It is. And thank you for the additional clarification, Ms. Gibson.
Next item?
Next item, 4.6 received for action personnel actions.
Apologies to Ms. Cosby, completely misunderstanding the question earlier. We did do an estimate based on the last two years of hiring, and then number is two hundred and twenty. Um, this two, that, yes. Why?
Yes, the teacher is determined.
Um, leaving again, school boards, recommend town office actions for the school board being scheduled for Monday, April 8, 2019, include the nomination of seven employees, the change of contract of nine employees, the resignations of four employees, the furlough of 10 employees, the returning from leave of 12 employees, the retirement of two employees, the rescission of one employee, the termination of one employee, and the change, the name change of nine employees. You have a motion?
I'm going to approve the recommendations of the, um, town office for these actions.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the town officer HR action as presented. Any discussion? Call a question?
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Cepini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is item five, for items discussed at 14 and 2019, 2023, 2023 city books.
I believe this was just a placeholder throughout the budget season, but, um, if the board would agree, I think we've discussed the budget quite a bit tonight, so we could potentially move on.
Next, our next item is to receive the budget statement from the period ending February 20th, 2019.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam vice-chair, board members, superintendent cameras. Included in your information this evening is the, um, monthly financial report for the period ending February 28th, 2019. And you'll look on page three for me, we're trending this far from a revenue perspective. The only, um, statement on this is under the local revenue, it might look a little bit low, but we get, um, recorded, we report our appropriation for the same quarter, so when we look at this report, it's going to get, I know, like, thirty-nine million dollars, so, we're doing fine from a revenue perspective. On, on page five, something that we watch here closely, is under the other compensation, because that's where we run, um, what looks like a deficit, although we had those dollars are budgeted under the, um, personnel services parting, but this is used to track things like leave payouts, vacation payouts, and new type of overtime, um, that we really just like to track that separately. So, we're doing fine there also. And you'll look, we, we're just one second, on page seven, um, under the other compensation, this shows us where we are this year as compared to, um, last year, and I just wanted to let you know that we're trending well, and we spent three hundred thousand dollars last year today, this year, we do have a deficit. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Next item?
The next item had six second agenda, six possible policy for action, for problems, for the activity request we have done this evening. Next item has seven other informational items, seven points of regard received for information budget transfers, those documents were posted, we'll ask for information on the, um, abandoned centers, eight new business.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, I just wanted to, um, we received a list with the agenda requests, and one that I thought I had come in, perhaps I was, um, I did not, was the, um, the conversation regarding, um, alternative education, and then also, um, uh, around our adult education program.
So, how does that align with the strategic plan priorities?
So, um, this is a, this is a, it pertains to the alternative education, this is a budget item, um, we have to, you know, we, we, you know, board, we, we do the, the contract, so, um, so, that.
Can you just, can you do, roll it up? Because...
Alternative education is...
Yes, it's certainly in the strategic plan.
Alternative education is actually one point step.
Sure. So, I just want board members to apologize, day in practice, as we add, um, agenda items under new business, that we align those items with the, um, strategic plan priorities, because again, that is our framework, and to keep us on track and to keep us focused on dealing about the business of children. Ms. Cosby?
Okay, so, and then keeping with what we discussed with new business, um, before, and if we did not have like this, Ms. Owen and I had discussed adding the PPI to our discussion, which is an alignment with action priority one, action one point eight for each other. So, um, again...
If I may, that is a lead on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
And I know Dr. I was prepared, we're talking about adult education as well, um, so, we will, uh, address that.
Mr. Young, one second. Ms. Burke and Mr. Young?
I have a question for you regarding being consistent with our strategic plan. Is this the standard procedure that has to be used for meetings? If not, maybe we need to start adding each area under the strategic plan priorities, so then we're consistently in place, which will, and also, as we stated during our retreat, adding the vision and the mission statement. But if we can just do away with this, and put it instead of priorities, is these two ladies just listed, that would, it may be a little bit more work, but in due time, I hope to do that, because that will help us to continue to see and approach things in that business as well. I would mind it, but our expectations are...
Thank you for that point, duly noted. So, Ms. Wilson is currently working on updating the agenda to, to display or demonstrate those items that we're referring to. Ms. Young, then Ms. Gibson?
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna say, I kinda like what, uh, my colleagues over there did a moment ago, uh, yeah, never, I mean, you know, the strategic plan is gonna be real, it's not gonna be like a lot of organizations, just put it on a shelf somewhere, but that's, I think, uh, that's a good practice, to say, new business, one point whatever, two point whatever, it's not like...
Ms. Cosby?
Oh.
So, just remember this is part of our discussion with board governors, training. Ms. Gibson?
As, as we're talking about, um, agenda structure, I also wanted to just re, um, reiterate the, the, the suggestion to have a section for unfinished business in our, um, in our agendas, that, um, you know, we don't lose track of things that, um, we did, that we unfinished business, and we call unfinished business.
So, our board clerk will be keeping track of agenda items, and when they are added to the agenda, and it is not added to the agenda at the next meeting, she will, um, keep the board abreast as far as the, the date of, or either, yeah, for future consideration. So, the clerk will be keeping track of that, so.
The next item is item nine, announcements.
So, board members, I just want to remind everyone to, as we move forward with our internal auditor interviewing process, so HR, they have provided questions for potential candidates, that we have received, now asking for board input, so if you can submit questions for the interview for their internal auditor position by April 12th to the board clerk, because this has been outstanding, impending for a while, so we want to move forward. So, again, if you have questions that you would like to submit, interview questions along with what HR, um, I mean, we, uh, given resources that they have prepared, we're asking that you submit your questions to the clerk by the 12th of April.
I have an announcement, and that is, we need another board member Friday to do with one side. Yay, yay! Ms. Cosby?
Thank you.
Ms. Burke?
Um, just, uh, want to reference, we received a listing of the name, the, um, city council's listing of looking reviewing the budget, and I think the next big one, big meeting per se is on April 22nd. We really need to stop going there and reminding people in our neighborhoods to show up at the city council meeting, because decisions are made per hour request, and we're not there. So, if we can really, I wanna go to, like, one April 22nd, I'm not going to do the night of work session, but I can do the evening, just the clock on the 22nd of April. It's on 22nd on that Monday, so we need to stop going to those meetings.
So, Ms. Wilson, if you can give dates and times, um, councils, work session?
And the formal meeting?
And the panel meeting. Send that information out to board members.
We cannot trust enough to remind our teachers, support staff, our parents, our students to come out in support of making things better, but we have recommended that.
Thank you.
All right. Pursuant to section 2.2, that 3711K1 of the Code of Virginia in 1950, I believe, I understand, is two board, of the City of Richmond, convening those seven to discuss this time of performance and emotion of employees of the region. Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Cepini and seconded by Ms. Barlow. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? So, seeing that we have none, um, we're now in close.